So we are gonna call the meeting out at nine AM. First of all, the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are gathering on 36 lands, a part of the traditional territories of the many First Nations, Matisse and Inuit in Alberta. The town of Drayton Valley is grateful for knowledge keepers and elders and the stories and teachings they share of these lands and its people. Okay, let's rise for the national anthem. Thank you, everyone. I guess we'll go to the next agenda item, adoption of the agenda. There's deletion, I guess, from the agenda for Opportunity Home will be moved to the November 15th meeting. Other than that, is there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
I believe the RCMP delegation.
Okay, so we are adding the RCMP stats. Okay, perfect, and that's under the delegations. Thank you for that, Alvera. So is there anybody who can make a motion to adopt the agenda with that changes? Thank you, Consul Clark. All in favour? Thank you. Okay, October 18th, 2023, regular meeting of council, organisational meeting of council, minutes public hearing for combined bylaw 2307D and 238D direct control district. Is there any corrections or amendments to that? There's none, can somebody adopt that as well? Thank you, Consul Maggie. And we have another adoption, October 18th, 2023, regular meeting of council minutes. The October 18th, 2023 organisational meeting of council minutes, October 4th, 2023, public hearing for combined bylaw 2307D and 238 direct control district minutes. Can somebody adopt that, or if there's any... Thank you very much. We have one proclamation. Oh, sorry, all in favour? Thank you. We have one proclamation, that is for Family Violence and Prevention Month. Family Violence Prevention Month, there are many people in Alberta who experience family violence, and whereas abuse crosses all barriers and includes emotional, physical, psychological, sexual and financial abuse, and affects people of all ages. Whereas the effects of family violence may be carried on from generation to generation, and whereas all Albertans have a role to play in preventing family violence. Therefore, I, Deputy Mayor Amila Gomana of Town of Drayton Valley, do hereby proclaim November 23, Family Violence and Prevention Month, in Town of Drayton Valley. That's it for proclamations?
Gomana, just a point, the Purple Lights, Light Nights campaign that will run through the month of November, those purple lights were up and they're on, right across from the civic centre. And it's quite interesting to see that combination of the blue and the purple, so it's good, thank you.
Perfect, yeah, thank you for reminding that, Consul Maggie. After the proclamations, we do not have any public hearings, but we have a very important delegation here. We are going to go to 7.1 council recognition. And this recognition is for Pat Jeffries. Pat Jeffries, a long time employee of Wildrose School Division, was known for her tremendous passion for her students and their success. Pat started as the Vice Principal of Evergreen Elementary School in 2003, served as Acting Vice Principal in 2008, and became Principal at Frank Badock High School in 2010. In the fall of 2014, she assumed the role of Principal at the Drayton Valley Community Outreach School. It has been said that Pat was a legend and was highly regarded by the colleagues who worked tirelessly to ensure student success. Her students knew her as a person they could talk to when they were having a bad day. Although she has retired from teaching as of 2016, it certainly has not stopped her from caring for the community. A dream of Pat was to give families and community members an opportunity to connect with one another and share a meal together. Pat's determination found the way, and in 2017, she helped to coordinate three years of monthly community dinners with FCSS. Pat is a longtime member of the Drayton Valley Rotary Cup and considers herself as the treasurer. Her tireless efforts can be seen in the annual Diamond Gala, Ladies Gala, the DV100 and the many other ways she and the club offer service about self. Finally, as the President of the Pembina Fish and Recruitment and Retirement Committee, Pat works to build a sustainable system for fish and recruitment and retirement that will ensure ongoing fishing services to the Drayton Valley area. Pat, thank you so much for all you have done in these many, many years, taking care of us, our children, our families, and everyone that needed a little bit more support. Council would like to recognise your past and present community spirit with this token of appreciation. If you could come down, Pat, and then we'll... Okay, moving on to our next agenda item. I see that Mr Smith is here, so from 7.2, Drayton Valley Municipal Library Banner Presentation.
Hi. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm not exactly sure what to say, I guess I'll just say how this came about, and then I'll present the banners, so of course, we all know, we all had to get out of town. And one of the first things when we came back was just kind of trying to think of how we could thank all the people who worked hard to save our town and the areas around our town as well. So I kind of brainstorming had this in my mind, how can we let other people, not just myself, because I'm grateful, but how can we let other people in the community as well, share their thanks? And so, this banner project came in the works, and we've got quite a few signatures on here. I'm sure there are more people who would have loved to sign the banner too, so just look at it as a small token representing the many, many people who are so thankful. And I know that there's a lot of people and organisations that we aren't able to thank on the banners, but we just stuck with a few major ones, because banners cost a little bit of money. So anyways, and we're also grateful for the town supporting this project financially. Fine Line Signs was able to help support this as well. And without further ado, I guess we will present who would like to represent the town, or how shall we do this?
We will present. We would like to thank the Town Council. For me, when I was evacuated, it was really important to see you on the news, to give us the assurance, so thank you.
So, well, we are thanking today, here are three organisations, so we're thanking the fire services. We do have a banner for each fire hall, two of them are hanging out over there, we'll just present one right now. And for the town themselves, and also for the RCMP, I believe there are some representatives. Brazzo County will also be receiving a banner, and they'll get that at their council meetings as well. So, and we have a couple cards, Alberta Culture Days this year, we kind of made this our theme, and so a few people created some cards of thanks for the different organisations as well, so. They are labelled.
There's town.
This is the town. Should we call the representatives up?
Yeah, we can go there, but first of all, you know, thank you very much for the library and both of you for doing this.
You're welcome. I'm happy to do it.
Okay, so, yes. Yes, another picture.
Yes, it's photo day.
Another day, another picture. Camera, wow.
This is ours.
Project banner, oh. Everyone's ease. Stay in there, Vera. Yep, thank you, Vera. Want to do the fire department first, or the RCMP? Very good.
Thank you.
Really, thank you.
Sorry, just a few technicals.
This was Verna's idea. She kicked the idea past us as a library team when we were coming back into town. So, it made sense, and I was all behind it.
Yes. It was your same background?
Troy's here, Troy is here.
Once again, thank you, Vernice, for the idea, and Public Library for making it happen. And also, you know, we all, as a community, went through rough times, and thank you for RCMP, as well as the fire department for getting us through that. Thank you very much. Since we have RCMP up and running already, maybe we'll go to RCMP stats first, if you don't mind, and then we'll go to the next agenda item. Good morning.
Good morning. So we have the September stats. Few things to highlight on that page. As you can see, we continue to trend down in our crime stats, so things are moving in a positive direction. There was, through the month of September, so these are the stats from January through to the end of September. We continue to trend down, but specifically in September, three thefts of motor vehicles, so that's very, very reasonable for the town of Drayton Valley, but we are working to get that to zero. Five break-in enters, only one provincial roadside suspension, so one impaired. And a total of eight files that would be scored as spousal abuse, so that relates directly to what you were speaking to earlier. That, the RCMP interprets that in a very liberal way, so it's, it is what it is. It's just something we're working towards through education with our VSU. The next page there looks really good, everything's green, we are continuing to trend down. I think a lot of that is gonna be just through natural crime cycles, but the fact that the detachment's fully staffed, guys have found time to be very proactive, be out on the road. Our visibility, I think, continues to increase, and I think we're seeing that reflected here. So it does make a difference, the more we can keep our policemen out on the road. The next page I included is just for a reference. That is the average of all the Western Alberta District municipalities. So you can see in some areas, they are trending down, but they are seeing a rise in person crimes and break-in enters across the Western Alberta District, where in Drayton Valley, we're managing to keep everything green and moving in the right direction. So I think overall, our approach is being effective and we're on the right track. A few things I want to highlight from September. So in September, we had the Christian school go into a hold and secure. We had a subject fleeing from the police, he attempted to gain entry into the school for the sole purpose of evading police. The school did a great job going into the secure and hold, and members were able to arrest the subject without incident prior to him gaining entry. We had a traffic stop on some subject well-known to police. It resulted in the arrest of a known drug dealer and a substantial seizure of narcotics and cash, resulted in charges to Ashton Cardinal and Jade Ashby. They were charged with possession for the purpose of trafficking, and both were remanded. So good work on the members, that was a proactive stop. We had, as a result of a noise complaint at Pembina Manor, members attended and entered into a drug investigation, and over 14 grams of fentanyl was seized as a result of that investigation, along with assortment of other drugs. And Tracy Starrett was charged with possession for the purpose of trafficking and obstruct appeal as a result of that investigation, and that, again, was not a proactive, that was reactive to a complaint, but the members had the wherewithal to spin it into a drug investigation. Our GIS unit, so our general investigative section, our plainclothes guys, were conducting surveillance on two known prolific offenders. It resulted in the arrest of Jesse Jabs and Stacy Smudge. They were both charged for possession of break-in tools and flight from PO. It's believed they were actually on their way to commit some property crime in the form of copper theft, and our GIS unit managed to prevent that just through targeting our prolific offenders, which is one of our priorities. I've been drilling down on our facilities issue, and so far, there's been a lot of very positive reaction to the possibility of the RCMP turning the building over to the town and making it a town asset. It's gone through the district management, which is 100% in support of it, and it's now with divisional management to see if they can work through that process and offer it to the town, if the town has an appetite for that. Not sure what the timing on that'll look like, but it's something that may be worth discussion amongst the council, to see if that would even be something you'd be interested in. It would probably make things easier to get anything done with that building if it was a town asset. The smaller the government, the easier it is to work with and get things done. And as of today, it's kind of a monumentous day within the detachment in the sense that we have changed our scheduling procedures. We're now moved away from the old post system, and we're going to a watch system. So that means the same group of members will be working with their supervisor and working as kind of that autonomous unit. I think it's gonna result in a little more direct supervision, a little more growth opportunities for our members, a little more mentorship from our NCOs, and I expect it to result in a more effective policing model for the detachment. This is a project Sergeant Hoopman's been working on for quite a while, and we're finally just able to action it now. Another thing that takes effect in parts of the province today through the prosecutor's office is pre-charge, which means from now on, any investigative file, criminal code investigative file, will have to be submitted to Crown for approval before charges are laid. I think it's actually gonna be a very effective system, it's been tried throughout the province in different areas, and there's been a lot of growing pains with it, but they found it to be very, very effective. I think what we're gonna see, though, within Drayton Valley is probably an immediate drop in the number of criminal code charges being laid, but I think we will see increasing convictions and follow-through on those charges. But I think as the members learn and the Crown prosecutors learn with the system, we'll probably see our numbers kind of bump back to normal. With that, though, I'd ask council to consider moving forward with the, what we discussed with our multi-year financial plan of adding the two municipal employee positions at the detachment, because with the pre-charge and the watch system, we're hoping to add a shift assistant to each watch to take over some of the administrative duties of the members. It's kind of a, not to be dismissive, but we're running into a problem where the members are basically administrative support. It's kind of a, not to be dismissive, but we're running into a problem where the the members are basically administrative support with firearms. We'd like to see them out on the road doing their job. So by the addition of the two municipal positions to tag along with the watches, we'd still be one short, but then through attrition, we can reclassify one of the jobs right now. Because all our current admin staff has been hired under the understanding of it's a day shift job. But we want to alter that to a modified shift work so they follow their own watch and then can relieve some of that administrative burden. I think with that, the pre-charge, the watch system, and by adding these municipal employees as support staff, I think we're going to increase the visibility and effectiveness of the detachment even further. Pending any questions, that's all I have today.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. Is there any questions from the council? Councilor Maggie?
Good morning, Troy and Ryan. Outstanding report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Those are the things that when we used to go through the stats, you'd you'd just go ahead and know what to say about all that. But bringing it down and saying, here's what we're doing and making it real, I think, I it really adds a lot of value for me. And I think for council, when I think about, though, the questions that you raise about the building and an asset and those kinds of things, it seems like that it's time for us to get back together as a council and and yourselves to to discuss what that means, where it goes, and then and then tying in the pre-charge and, you know, those things that you've just talked about, I think, are really important. But to my question, it's November 1. We've, winter is coming. What are what are we going to do with the folks that are living rough? And what's the plan that you have for that, for this winter?
Well, interesting you should bring that up. I've I've met with Mayor Dodds and and Tom. We've been quite involved in this. And to be 100% frank, this is not a policing issue. We will support and we're going to support the town in the actions they take. We're going to work to keep people safe. I've heard some incredibly inflated numbers of what our homeless population actually is. And I I can't speak to it. I haven't personally gone out and counted, but I can tell you that the number that was batted around of 120 homeless people in this community is absolutely ridiculous. And I will stand by that statement. I think we're looking closer to 30 or 40 people. And the other thing I've heard said is that because of the services provided to the homeless population within Drayton Valley to try and assist them and and help them get through the winter, we're drawing homeless people to Drayton Valley. And to be perfectly frank, that is another ridiculous notion. Most of the the homeless people we deal with within the the town of Drayton Valley are homegirl. They have ties to this community. I would think if you speak to some of the people in this room, they may have gone to school with some of these people, and they've they've fallen on hard times. So this is a social problem. And most of what my experience, and this is going to be anecdotal, but most of my experience within 20 years of policing, most of the homelessness is due to mental health and addiction issues. And Tom has come up with some really effective strategies, I think, moving forward. But this is a social problem that the police will assist with. Make sure when the social workers come out to to help these people or any community resources come out, we can provide policemen to help ensure that there's there's safety, that there's no issues. We saw that tragic incident a few years ago in BC with the homelessness in Surrey where a member was stabbed. We'll provide the security. We will help the social programs, the workers in the social programs be safe. We don't make a distinction. And this was another notion that was brought to me that the policing is too soft on the homeless people. Well, if they're stealing for subsistence, we don't, we we treat them differently than somebody that's stealing for profit. That's not really the case. Theft is theft. If people are, if hard-working citizens of Drayton Valley are being victimized, we deal with that in in a policing manner. And so police will not solve this problem, but we will ensure the people, the social workers, the the homeless coordinator, all these people that are working to assist the people living rough, we'll ensure their safety to the best of our ability. But that's sort of where we draw the line. We are very good at doing police stuff. That's not police stuff, so.
Right. I understand we're we're heading into do a little work with the folks out at our landfill. Will you play a role in that at all?
Absolutely. We'll probably be there more for security people to, and we have members of the detachment that have good relationships with some of our homeless people and that and know them by name, know them by sight, and will probably serve to be a bit of a calming influence. So we'll we'll do what we can to to be out there, have a presence and just ensure that things go smoothly. And basically, we're taking our direction from Tom on this, who's who's got some wonderful ideas and I think is very much the town is moving in the right direction. But we really are just on the fringe of this, helping out where we can, but they're not our initiative, so.
Outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Maggie. Any other questions? Councilor Bellas?
Good morning. I know when we were in that discussion, there was one issue that I thought was important, and that is that the public is not reporting as much as possibly they should so that you're aware of really what may be happening in the town. Maybe you could just expand on that?
Yeah, absolutely. And I do remember that conversation. And I think we've had some people walk through there and and see what is very likely stolen property out there. But when we go out there as police and we look at a snow blower or a quad or whatever, and we run a serial number on it, and it doesn't come back on our system is stolen because it hasn't been reported, we can't action that in any way, shape or form, because as far as we know, that was obtained lawfully. It was pulled from the dump, so we don't know. And I think because of the the prevalence of property crime through Alberta in the last 10, 15 years, people have got frustrated, and not just the prevalence of property crime, but the lack of action by our courts. People have gotten frustrated. It's not worth reporting. The problem with that is if you don't report it, we're unaware of the problem and we can't take proper policing action. So even if we don't have the the mechanism or the evidence to pursue charges, if people will report crimes when they happen, we can get stolen property on our system. We're aware of of crime trends within the community. We can then direct the appropriate resources to that. So I do encourage all the members, citizens of Drayton Valley. If they're a victim of crime, if they see a crime happen, report it. Understand, we work within limitations and, you know, resourcing limitations and the the policies set by our own organization as well as the the procedures and laws by the courts. But we want a record of it. And if we can action it, if we can lay charges, if we can make arrests, we will. But at the very least, we need the crimes reported so we can manage the the trends. And our analysts can see these trends and make us aware of them so we can concentrate on it for to be proactive.
Thank you. All in all, you know, as as you mentioned, the the numbers are going in the right direction. It's decreasing, whatever the reason may be. So thank you very much for your contingent, for, you know, keeping our community safe and making sure that, you know, we are in a safer community. And thank you very much for the for the report today. I'm sure, as Councilor Maggie mentioned, we'll be in contact with you in discussions about the building and the other stuff. So thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Council.
That concludes our delegations. One more.
7.4, the Rural Development Network is on the other page.
That's right. Thank you, Alvera, for reminding me that. So we are moving on to 7.4, Rural Development Network. We have Emma Wallace online, I believe, and Lola is going to give a little bit of introduction for RDN for us.
Good morning.
Go ahead, Ms. Trun.
Good morning.
Morning.
Okay, so the comments made by the RCMP were a perfect segue, actually, to this next coming up presentation. As as you probably know, I mentioned the RDN, the Rural Development Network, a lot. We've been, they've been a key partner in the work that we've been doing as a community to try to support people experiencing homelessness. We've been working with the RDN since 2013. So it's it's with great pleasure that I I have folks from the RDN here with us today. They've provided us with funding. They provided us with expertise when it came to facilitating community conversations. They provided with expertise in research. We've done three rounds of research with them now, and I've invited them to come today to talk about the most recent research that we've done, which is the housing, the 2013 Housing and Service Needs Estimation. That report is in your package. As you can see, it's a lot of information. So I've asked the experts to come in to to sort of navigate us through all the information that they have learned. And and like I said, it is a perfect segue because the comments that we don't have 120 homeless people in our community is absolutely right. However, there are that many who are somewhere on that spectrum. So but without further ado, I'll go ahead and invite our guests and they can talk about that further. So we do have Emma Wallace. She's joining us online, all the way from Ontario, I believe. And we also have Sydney Senikis, who is here with us in person. Maybe I'll just ask you, would you prefer to sit here or go up to the podium?
For the presentation, I'll sit, but and I guess I can, everyone can hear me okay.
Yeah, there's online.
Just here to help answer any questions and yeah, here to to meet everyone in person. It's it's great to be here.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Lola, for the introduction and thank you for both of you being here. Emma and and yourself, yeah? Flow is yours?
Amazing. Thank you. Can I just get a verbal confirmation that you could see my screen? It should say Drayton Valley, Alberta Housing and Service Needs Estimation?
Yes, we do on one screen.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, awesome. Thank you. Everyone disappeared when I shared my screen, so I wanted to confirm. Hi, everyone. As Lola said, my name is Emma Wallace. I'm the Project Manager of Community Development and Homelessness Estimations at RDN. My colleague Sydney is also here in person, and she's the Director of Homelessness Initiatives at RDN. Super excited to be here. I want to thank you all for for allowing us the time to speak. I just want to spend the next 10 minutes talking about the Housing and Service Needs Estimation project that Drayton Valley took part in in early 2023 and to highlight some of the some of the results. Before I get started, I do just want to take a moment to acknowledge that RDN's physical office is located on the traditional territories of Treaty VI and is home to many Métis and Inuit peoples. I also want to acknowledge that I personally live, gather and organize on the unceded Inishinnabe Algonquin Territory, also known as Ottawa, Ontario. As we organize around issues of homelessness, I really just want to recognize that the ways in which our presence on this land upholds colonialism and reproduces dispossession and violence for Indigenous folks. And so I really just want to acknowledge my personal responsibility and RDN's organizational responsibility and commitment to reconciliation. So with that, I want to discuss a little bit about the purpose of the 2023 Alberta Provincial Housing and Service Needs Estimation really quickly. So late last year, December last year, RDN received reaching home funding to support the third iteration of the provincial estimation project. And really, the purpose of this project was to provide a comprehensive picture of homelessness across Alberta, but also in individual rural, remote and indigenous communities like Drayton Valley. We also wanted to help inform service providers and municipal, provincial and federal policies, practices and funding decisions on homelessness, on housing and on support services. And then maybe most importantly, we wanted to elevate and incorporate the voices of folks who are experiencing homelessness in the solutions to end homelessness. So December last year, when we received funding for the project, we put out a call to a a call for interest, I guess you'd say, for rural, remote and indigenous communities across the province who might want to participate in the estimation. And Drayton Valley was one of the communities selected to take part. So before I dive into the results, this is kind of the last thing before I dive into the results. I do want to go over some of the definitions of homelessness and just make sure we're all on the same page. So these are the definitions that I'll use throughout the presentation and throughout the report. And these are the national, like this is the national standard for homelessness definitions. It was created by the Canadian Observatory on Homelessness. And basically, what this definition is, is it it kind of highlights the different circumstances that can be experienced by someone who is homeless. For example, someone who's sleeping outside is considered unsheltered. Someone who is maybe staying at a women's shelter or at the shelter pods would be considered emergency sheltered. If someone is couch surfing, sleeping in an abandoned building or in an overcrowded or a damaged housing type situation, they'd be considered provisionally accommodated. And then lastly, there's kind of folks who are at risk of homelessness. These are folks who their housing situation is precarious or they're in really inadequate housing situations in terms of like safety. So it's really important as we talk about homelessness in the community that we remember that there's these four different circumstances of homelessness, and people often will cycle through each circumstance kind of regularly. So now I'm going to spend the rest of the time highlighting some of the key findings from the data. And this is the biggest piece, and I think this speaks to our last delegation, and I'd love to have a bit of a conversation about it. So 92 respondents were experiencing homelessness in some capacity at the time of the survey. The survey happened in March 2023, so earlier this spring. On top of the 92 respondents experiencing homelessness, we identified 76 dependents under 18 and 99 additional adults as sharing living conditions with respondents who are experiencing homelessness. So that means that based on survey results, there are at least 267 community members who are experiencing homelessness in Drayton Valley. Now, I do want to take a minute to remind you that, you know, this doesn't mean that there are 267 community members who are unsheltered or emergency sheltered every single day in Drayton Valley. What it means is that in the month leading up to the survey, 267 community members experienced at least one instance of homelessness. So whether that be like at risk of homelessness, provisionally accommodated, emergency sheltered or unsheltered. So reminding us again that that spectrum is quite prevalent in this discussion. And the top three reported reasons for homelessness were due to low wages and inability to afford rent or mortgage payments and mental health issues. So going back to this kind of spectrum, one thing I really want to highlight, I don't want to clip that. One thing I really want to highlight again is is that people cycle through the spectrum on a regular basis. So for example, someone might be emergency sheltered one night, unsheltered the next, and then provisionally accommodated, couch surfing for the next week or two after that. Folks experiencing homelessness are often in very fluid situations. And so one of the things we wanted to do in our survey is ask respondents to describe their current housing situation through a certain, a series of statements. And they were encouraged to select all statements that applied to them. So some of the statements might be like, I slept in a car in the past month. I slept outside. I slept at a stranger's place, anything like that. There was probably about 15 statements that that they could select from. And then we've highlighted every instance of, excuse me, of homelessness in this chart. So there are more instances of homelessness than there are of folks who experienced homelessness because we wanted to, again, show the fluidity of of homelessness in the community. So you can see that most folks experience some form of like at risk of homelessness or being provisionally accommodated at the time of the survey, though many were also either unsheltered or emergency sheltered. What I think is really interesting and I I really want to highlight here is around rates of employment. So really interesting, rates of employment for respondents experiencing homelessness in Drayton Valley were really high. Valley were really high. Forty-seven percent of respondents experiencing homelessness were employed in some capacity. Sixty-eight percent of those employed were full-time, and 25% were part-time, and then 1% were on a casual basis. But this is a very high number in comparison to some other communities and in comparison to other iterations of this project. Tied really closely with employment is income. And so we asked respondents in the survey to indicate their approximate household income for 2022. Forty-four percent of respondents experiencing homelessness noted an annual household income of $30,000 or less, while 30% noted an annual household income of between $30,000 and about $70,000. So I think it's really important to take a minute here and reemphasize that 47% of respondents experiencing homelessness are employed in some capacity. One of the myths or misconceptions I often hear in my job is that people experiencing homelessness should just get a job. But I think what this data really shows us is that not only do, you know, 47% of respondents have a job, but when you look at the income associated with these respondents, sometimes having a job just isn't actually enough anymore, especially when we kind of consider that, you know, as a country, we've declared a housing crisis. And so that's really critical here. Another big component of the Housing and Service Needs Estimation is really to get a better picture of service use and service gaps in the community. And so to do this, we asked a series of questions around respondents' use of services and their ability to access services. So the top three reasons respondents experiencing homelessness access services are for basic needs, health and wellness, and financial services. When respondents were speaking to service use and service gaps, lack of transportation was also identified as a significant barrier for respondents. So this isn't necessarily new or even unique to Drayton Valley, because community members in rural, remote, and indigenous communities across the province and across the country often have to travel outside of their community to access services, especially things like medical services. Lack of transportation can really prohibit respondents who are experiencing homelessness from accessing them. So in Drayton Valley, while 50% of respondents experiencing homelessness noted traveling by vehicle to access services outside of the community, 19% resorted to hitchhiking or catching a ride with a stranger, and 19% of respondents experiencing homelessness simply don't bother accessing services outside of the community anymore because they're too far or too hard to get to. Continuing the theme of services and service use, we also kind of wanted to understand and highlight some shelter use patterns. So 33% of respondents experiencing homelessness accessed emergency shelter, most of them accessing a standard emergency shelter, likely the Drayton Valley shelter pods. All right. So providing respondents with the opportunity to share a little bit more about Drayton Valley from their view, we asked them to list, "What are two things that you love about the community and two things you maybe don't love about the community?" In terms of things they love, I thought this was really great. Respondents overwhelmingly spoke of their love for the sense of community. So things like, you know, they love the small-town feel, they love the location of the community, how friendly people are. Lots of folks also noted their appreciation for community leaders and for generally, like, people's sense of community spirit, which was really lovely to see. Not every community has that type of community feel. And then respondents also spoke of their love for some of the services that are currently available in Drayton Valley, specifically the Warming Hearts program and the shelter pods. And I think what's really cool and what's really important to highlight here is that respondents specifically mentioned that it was the staff at these services that made them so loved. And then in terms of things that respondents don't love about Drayton Valley, what really came up was kind of this lack of accessibility to public recreation and community spaces. So folks mentioned kind of concerns around accessibility of sidewalks, crosswalks, and then, like, the location of recreation infrastructure as creating barriers to their participation. And then respondents also noted that while there are many services in the community that they love, there's still some services that are missing in the community, which provides a bit of frustration, specifically around, like, a lack of childcare options, a lack of medical facilities, and public transportation. And then lastly, respondents experiencing homelessness spoke a lot about feeling, you know, excluded in the community, often feeling maybe judged or discriminated against for their housing situation. We also gave respondents the opportunity to tell us what they'd like to see more of in the community. So 78% of respondents believe more accessible and affordable housing is needed in Drayton Valley. And this includes wanting to see a transitional housing unit built in the community to support residents who no longer need emergency shelter but aren't yet able to or ready to live on their own and would require a bit of additional support. Respondents also emphasized a need for affordable seniors' housing and affordable independent living housing for folks with disabilities. And then 91% of respondents indicated a need for improved availability of public transportation. So this one's coming up a lot, and again, is not something that's necessarily unique to Drayton Valley, is a big kind of need or concern in many rural communities. And then folks kind of listed things like medical and mental health services, addiction services, childcare, and then a sexual assault center as services that they would like to see more of in Drayton Valley. So I'm throwing a lot of information at you in a short period of time, but I just want to take the last minute or so of my presentation to go over some of the opportunities that RDM has identified as next steps or possible next steps to address homelessness in the community. So we've identified three opportunities that can be undertaken to start addressing homelessness in the community. The first would be to increase community awareness and understanding of homelessness. Second is really around conducting a gap analysis and an audit of service offerings in Drayton Valley, recognizing that many folks noted some services they'd like to see brought to the community. And then the third is around considering public transportation options in the community to really support folks in accessing services that are needed to them. And the ability, excuse me, the ability to, you know, find kind of secure housing tends to depend quite a bit on transportation. One thing that we want to, like, make as a bit of an honorary mention, that's not listed as a key opportunity, but was the need for affordable housing in the community. This is a need that was brought up quite a bit. It's not outlined as a recommendation or an opportunity, because I think it will take more than, you know, it's quite an undertaking. And so there'll be quite a few conversations that need to happen before it can be considered a next step. But affordable housing was flagged as a huge need in the community. So that was a really condensed version of everything I wanted to share with you today. And I recognize I did that at a very quick speed and a very high level. So I would love to take the opportunity to answer any questions that you have. I'm also available to speak more to this after the fact, should anyone have questions after they've had the opportunity to kind of dive into the report a little bit more deeply. Thanks.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Emma. That was a very excellent presentation with lots of information. I guess I have a few questions, but I'll go to the council first and see if they have any questions. Counselor Maggie?
Deputy Mayor Kamana. Emma, I'm McGee here as a counselor. I'll wave so that you can see what direction I'm at.
Thank you.
Emma, that was a good presentation. It was interesting, the RCMP delegation that we had just before that, that speaks to other numbers. And we have that struggle, I think, in our community, trying to understand who is who and how it fits. What I was interested in is the methodology that you used through the RDM to get to the report and its findings. How did that all work? And who did you use? And could you explain that a bit?
Yes, thank you for that question. That's one thing, with such a tight time, I always, I always end up leaving out a little bit of the methodology to get to some of the data, but I love speaking to this. So thank you for that question. We use what's called a service-based population estimation approach, which is a hilariously long name, which basically means that we partner with local service providers in the community to administer the survey. And it happens over a 30-day period. So between January and mid-February, we worked with with Drayton Valley, with the FCSS office, to recruit service agencies who would partake in administering the survey. And then we trained all of the staff at those participating agencies. And then from March 1st to 31st, anyone who came through the doors of one of those participating agencies was asked to fill out a survey. Not everyone would necessarily say yes, but anyone who came through was asked to fill out a survey if they had time. They could fill out that survey on their own or with the help of a staff member. And then that information was collected. At the end of those 30 days, all of the surveys were were sent back to us at RDM to do analysis on. We also had an open survey link, so that was kind of advertised on social media and through the FCSS, I think, main newsletter. So anyone who maybe didn't want to go into a service agency or didn't necessarily need to go into the service agency was asked to kind of fill out that survey in that open survey link. So what we, we use this, I guess, how do I want to phrase this? We use this methodology because we think what we find often in communities is that people don't self-identify as experiencing homelessness, even though often they are. Because we use that national definition of homelessness with the four circumstances, often people who maybe are couch surfing, staying with family, or maybe even renting their home, would say, "Hey, I'm in a home. I have a roof over my head. I'm considered stable, right? Like, my housing situation is stable." But if we look at that situation or that experience compared to the definitions of homelessness, couch surfing is still considered homelessness. If you're renting, but you don't have electricity or access to water, it's still considered homelessness. And so we do this survey in a way that we ask anyone to fill it out, whether they believe their situation is insecure, like, whether they believe they're experiencing homelessness or not, because oftentimes, people don't recognize that their situation is considered homeless under the definitions. And so we don't kind of specify who can answer the survey. Anyone who comes into the service agencies through that time or sees the open link can fill out the survey. And then we do analysis that would identify people's housing situation. And so there were, I believe, five service agencies who took part with Drayton Valley, Brighter Futures, Warming Hearts, Primary Care Network, FCSS, and then the Family Resource Network.
Any other questions?
That answers your question.
It did, Emma. Thank you. The last piece is, I didn't notice anything about age, but you did talk a little bit about seniors' housing and affordable housing. And that, so that told me a little bit that maybe there is an age thing that we need to consider, or in fact, it's really, you know, 17 to 25. I don't know. Do you have a thought on that?
Yes, yeah. So in the report, page 11 actually has a figure with kind of some of the page 13, sorry, has a little bit of info on kind of demographics of respondents. There were quite a few folks in that older adult seniors range who were experiencing homelessness. So 41% of respondents who were experiencing homelessness were between 40 and 60, and then 10% were over 60. I think it's really important here to mention that a lot of the literature on homelessness identifies people who are at that 40-year mark, who are experiencing homeless as a senior. There's a lot of research that suggests that folks experiencing homelessness are 10 to 15 years older or kind of experience life at a 10 to 15-year older age range than they actually are. You know, being homeless can really affect, like, physiologically, your body, it's really hard on the body, mentally as well. And so for 41% of the population who's experiencing homelessness to be 40 to 60, it shows that we've got a bit of an aging homeless population. It also shows that likely a lot of these folks are, would physiologically be considered seniors as it is. And then there are 10% of respondents who are already in that 60-plus mark. So we are seeing quite a kind of aging population of homelessness in the community right now.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions from counsel? Counselor Clark?
Hi there. I don't think you can see me there, but Counselor Colin Clark talking here. A couple things, you know, when I'm looking at kind of the living situation, and specifically Table 3 around rents and mortgage costs, you know, you see 27 that don't pay rent or a mortgage, but then you see, you know, a whole number of people who do pay rents. And I mean, generally speaking, if you're paying rents, you're pretty stable, are you not, in terms of, "I have a roof over my head today and tomorrow and for the foreseeable future." I guess, how does that tie into homelessness and these numbers if I'm paying rent or a mortgage?
Yeah, this is a great question. What we see a lot of in rural communities, like Drayton Valley, like this community, is that someone might be paying a mortgage or paying a rent, but they don't have utilities, for example. So we're seeing a lot of inadequate housing these days, folks who are maybe in, like, temporary permanent structures. That's kind of a juxtaposition, but like, things like trailers or mobile homes that have been put on properties, but they don't have utility hookups, for example. So they're paying either rent or mortgage on their structure, probably not necessarily on the land, but they don't have water or they don't have electricity or heat. And so that would be considered under the national definitions of homelessness. That's still considered provisionally accommodated, which is considered a form of homelessness. Often, we also see folks who are renting, but maybe are in a precarious situation in that, you know, asked to exchange sexual favors for rent by their landlords, or they're renting, but there are 10 people living in a two-bedroom apartment, which would be considered like that overcrowding, which makes, which kind of fits, again, under that definition of homelessness around kind of that provisionally accommodated stage. So those are the situations that would see someone renting or paying mortgage and still experiencing homelessness. The other piece of this is that we do see a lot of fluidity, and so there might be someone who was renting, because we kind of base this on your experience over the last 30 days. And so someone might have been renting in February and is, you know, either couldn't pay rent and had to leave, or their lease was up and they couldn't find somewhere new, or were evicted, or any number of kind of scenarios. And so they've listed what they were renting for, but now they're actually unsheltered or emergency sheltered.
Okay. And then just to follow up to that, too, you know, when you're looking, when we're looking at the Table 2, the approximate household incomes in 2022, you know, I think the poverty level in Canada is considered around $37,000 for a family of two adults, two kids. And then for an individual, it's around $20,000. So a lot of these people are living above the poverty level, I guess, as defined by whomever defines it. But I also see here, there's some that are, let's call them, high-income earners, when you look at it with respect to the averages in Alberta. Now, I guess... with respect to the averages in Alberta. Now, I guess, you know, there's more to it than just money. I mean, there's addictions, there's mental health, all that sort of stuff. But, you know, if I'm making more than seventy thousand dollars a year, I hope I'd be able to, to, to get some accommodations and some stability. So I guess, how do you, how do you kind of extrapolate some information from those numbers?
Absolutely. A, a few kind of different pieces. I think you, you hit the nail on the head with the main piece, which is homelessness is an income and a housing issue, but it's also a social issue. And so if someone is experiencing, you know, i- is struggling with substance, substance use, substance abuse, is dealing with mental health issues, income from the previous year wouldn't necessarily, you know, that doesn't necessarily equate them being able to hold down stable housing. Similarly, what we often, it's a bit of a, I guess, catch-22 on our part, but often what we see is, you know, folks who are partnered and experiencing domestic or family violence and abuse, that is their household income, but they don't necessarily have access to that income or don't feel safe to leave even with that access to income. And so they continue to stay in a, in a kind of situation of insecurity and abuse for that reason. And then the other piece is again, that, you know, that might have been my income last year. We, we kind of saw it with COVID and, and kind of all the I guess, up in the airness of, of COVID is, you know, I might have made eighty thousand last year, but maybe I, I got laid off in December and, and I, you know, wasn't good at keeping a savings. And so now in March of this year, I don't have savings, I haven't found a job yet, or, or I've only found a part-time job, and I can't conserve, I can't secure housing in that way. So again, some kind of scenario-dependent in, in that piece. And then I can't speak for Drayton Valley specifically, but a lot of rural, remote indigenous communities have a much higher poverty rate than the national average. And the national average isn't calculated in the best way in, in kind of our opinion specifically. But, you know, the cost of living, for example, in the town of Drayton Valley is five percent higher than the national average. So if, if that rate is, I don't remember what we said, thirty-seven for a family, thirty-seven thousand for a family in, in Canada, we'd probably want to put that closer to forty-two, forty-three thousand in Drayton Valley, that type of thing. So I don't know if that answers your question exactly, but those, those are kind of my reflections on, on what you asked about.
Yeah, yeah, I guess there, there's no right or wrong answer, just, just looking for some insight there. And then lastly, I just saw some conflicting responses there. You know, we're really good with our available services, but then we also lack services. So it's, do we, you know, is that just a preference? Is that just a, you know, one's position versus another's? Or are we truly lacking some, some critical things? Or do we have the basics covered, I guess, is the question?
Yeah, that's a great question. You know, it's kind of interesting, because in a lot of communities, what we'll see is what we don't like about Drayton, or what we don't like about the community is a lack of services. But what, what we don't often see is we actually love the services that are here. So the first thing I would say is, like, amazing that the services that are currently here are really well-loved by, by community members. The same people who said they love the services are the ones who said they need more. And so I think where it really comes down to, you know, Drayton Valley has a really great emergency shelter program right now and day program with Warming Hearts. Excuse me. So a lot of basic need services are absolutely available and are really well-loved by community. The services that are missing really, that, that were really key to people were the childcare, more medical services, and then transportation. So, you know, I use the, we use the term services broadly to define what people don't love, but it's really those three things. Community members think that childcare is, is really needed in the community. More transportation is really needed. And then I can't speak to what's available currently in Drayton Valley, but, but folks really highlighted a desire, I guess, for seeing more like medical-specific services in the community. So whether that be doctors' offices, mental health offices, dentists, that type of thing. People thought there was a lack of medical infrastructure.
Thank you, Counselor Clark. I guess I have a couple of questions. So first thing I noticed when you went through the presentation, Emma, was that, you know, they, they mentioning about lack of finances and other reasons, but I didn't see addictions as a reason for not having shelters. So that was kind of a interesting observation. Also, when you talk about transportation, I would just like to know, you know, is it within the community transportation what, what they're suggesting, or is it from here to Edmonton to major cities, major centers to get services, or, you know, what, what kind of a transportation that, that they are, they're seeking for?
Yeah, absolutely. That's a great question. I would say, based on kind of the responses that folks gave, it's accommodation of both. People really talked about kind of struggles to get across the community, get around in the community, whether that's because they're trying to get to their job or they're trying to secure housing, but it's too far away from the services that they need. So definitely a need for, for kind of in-community transportation options, but a huge part of it as well. And so this is difficult, I recognize, when I talk about this as a kind of an opportunity, because there's only so much you can do as a, as a municipality. But a huge part of this as well is transportation among communities throughout the province. And so this is something that we've recommended to the provincial government to support is considering kind of updating or upgrading or, or just bringing back transportation throughout the province that would get folks from one community to another. Specifically, again, lots of people talked about having to leave the community for like specialized medical appointments for childcare, that type of thing. And so the ability to kind of go within the community, but also leave to access any kind of services they need was really a thing. So just so you know, this is a recommendation we've made to the province of, of a need for kind of provincial transportation methods. But within the community as well, it came up quite a bit as, as just a little bit of help getting around.
Okay. Thank you for that. I know we have to go to a break, but I have a final question, and I think a great segue to what you mentioned. So about the funding, right? You know, as you mentioned, some of these, it's hard for a municipal to take on. And RDN, I think, I mean, if you can explain where you are getting your funding and, but what's your priorities? And of course, you know, helping us to, you know, put some solutions for, for some of these problems that we have.
Yeah, that's a, that's a wonderful question. I was just going to say, Sydney, if you don't mind, actually, Sydney's kind of our, our, our director of, of homelessness and also kind of works really closely with funders. So I think she'd be phenomenal to answer this.
Perfect.
Perfect. Yeah, and that's why Emma and I are both here today, because we thought, yeah, it'd be a good opportunity to, yeah, speak to some of the funding questions that might come up as well. So I manage the Reaching Home Program at the Rural Development Network. And the Reaching Home Program is Canada's center of the federal government's strategy aimed at reducing and preventing homelessness across Canada, and it's a community-based program. And so we receive money directly from the federal government to distribute out to rural, remote and indigenous communities in Alberta. Now, we recognize that the funding we get, it's quite small for the need that currently exists in, in rural Alberta. We're seeing homelessness increasing across rural, remote and indigenous communities in Alberta and across the country. So as of right now, our current agreement with the federal government is coming to an end at the end of March of 2024. However, we are expecting an extension to our current agreement. We're just waiting for those, for that confirmation. And so we, yeah, we have a good relationship with, with Lola and Drayton Valley's FCSS, and so we'll be sure to share more information and details once they become available on additional funding. But we're hoping that that additional funding, we can start essentially opening up a coffre proposals in, in the winter. We've been told, we were told the funding was supposed to be announced back in the springtime, but it's been a little, there's been some delays. So now is a really good time. I think the timing is, is really great with, yeah, Emma here sharing the, the data findings. And as, as council starts to think about next steps, yeah, just know that, that there should be additional funding coming and available for the community to, to access and, and apply for.
Thank you. Yeah, that's fantastic news for the community. Again, you know, thank you very much for both of you being here and giving this presentation to us. As, as you both mentioned, you know, there's a lot of conversations that we need to have as a council and see what we can, how we can work with and Strand is working with you as well. So thank you very much for coming today and presenting to us. Okay, we'll take a ten-minute break. Thank you. Perfect. Let's call the meeting back to order again. We have business arising from delegations. Is there anything from administration for that?
Not from administration, thanks.
Okay. So if that's the case, then we can move on. Just nothing from the council as well. Now we are moving on to decision items. The first decision items, item is youth advisory committee member appointment. Ms. Strand.
So the Drayton Valley Youth Advisory Committee, terms of reference, which is established by by law, two thousand twenty-two dash eighteen dash C, does state the following in section four, that the composition and appointment of the board consists of two youth representatives from the school divisions as follows, one representative from Wild Grove School Division, one representative from St. Thomas Aquinas Catholic School Division, then seven community youth representatives between the ages of fourteen and under twenty-five at the time of appointment or renewal, reflecting the diversity of youth in the community. So in total, there's nine positions for the, the youth advisory committee members. And although they just were established back last spring, we did want to align things with the typical organizational schedule. Therefore, as of October 31st, those members who did apply for a one-year term are expiring. So as of yesterday, there will be one St. Thomas Aquinas School Division position vacant and four community at-large positions vacant. A total of three new applications were received for appointment. Administration recommends that the following applicants for the recommended term below, Ashlyn Patty is currently enrolled in St. Thomas Aquinas School Division and would prefer a two-year term. Administration is recommending a two-year term. Rebecca Burl is currently enrolled in St. Thomas Aquinas School Division and would prefer a two-year term. And administration is recommending a two-year term. Alicia Codic, Alicia Codic is enrolled in Wild Grove School Division and has no term preference. Administration is recommending a three-year term. And a total of two applications were received from past members for reappointment. Administration recommends reappointing the following applicants for the recommended term below. Tarek Jabbar is currently enrolled in university and would prefer a one-year term. Administration is recommending a one-year term. And Lily Waldo is currently enrolled in Wild School, the Royal School Division and would prefer a one-year term. Administration is recommending a one-year term. The development, the development of the Youth Advisor Committee will serve to build a relationship between youth and town council and is really providing a forum for communication between town administration and the community partners about issues relevant to youth in the community. And we're looking very forward to get, or continue to work with them. So the recommendation is that council appoints Ashlyn Patty, Rebecca Burl, and Alicia Codic, as well as reappoint Tarek Jabbar and Lily Waldo to the Town of Drayton Valley Youth Advisory Committee for terms as recommended by administration.
Thank you, Ms. Strand. I had the opportunity to sit on that committee last year, create a bunch of youth in our community, very motivated and enthusiastic. So it's good to see that they've put their name forward again. Is there any comments or questions, or is, can somebody make a motion? Counselor Ballas?
Thank you. I just noticed Alicia Codic, her application is for family and community support services.
Yes, I did notice that as well. I, I think, and I just noticed that this morning, she did submit two applications to sign on both the Youth Advisor Committee and the FCSS for as the youth representative. I think just her second application got missed into the package, but she was, she was wanting to serve on both, which I think in many ways will be advantageous.
And also some of those, I guess, for reappointment, their application is back from March. Is, is there a reason for that? Does that it's March?
Well, I, I was trying to make it as simple as possible. As I had mentioned, they had just applied earlier this year. It was, it was a quick turnaround to try to get them reapplying, and we certainly wanted them to reapply. There wasn't actually a meeting even scheduled to, to align with getting those applications in. So with their permission, I just resubmitted the previous applications from springtime.
Yeah, I guess the, the, the term that they had last year was a shorter term, because the committee was created in the middle of the year, the year that we cycle the organizations, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions or somebody can make a motion? Okay. Thank you, Counselor Evans.
I'll make the motion that council appoint Ashlyn Patty, Rebecca Burl, and Alyssa Codic, as well as reappoint Tarek Jabbar and Lily Waldo to the Town of Drayton Valley Youth Advisory Committee for terms as recommended by administration.
Thank you, Counselor Evans. Is there any comments or questions on that motion? Seeing none, I'll ask a question. All in favor? Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the next decision item. Is Lola, you have your work cut out? Lola, again?
Pass this one on to Ms. Thompson?
Okay, sorry about that. Thompson? It's nine point two, Brazu Foundation Board Appointments Committee Member at Large for the Town of Drayton Valley.
Thank you. Just trying to find my spot. No, I don't. I apologize. So Brazu Foundation is an organization which manages social housing programs in Drayton Valley and surrounding area. Operations for the foundation are mandated through provincial ministerial order and governed by local board of directors. Social housing programs offered in, offered include a, the Shangri-La Lodge, senior apartment projects, family and individual housing programs, and the direct-to-tenant rent supplement program. These programs are, all have separate reporting requirements and separate budgets. The Brazu Foundation Board of Directors' composition, as outlined in the ministerial order for the Foundation Board and confirmed by their executive director, consists of the following membership, comprised of three elected officials and two appointed at-large, members-at-large. Two members from the Town of Drayton Valley, two from the Brazu County, and one from the Village of Brent. Brazu Seniors Foundation Government's policy states the following section three. Three point one, the management body shall be governed by a board comprised of five members as follows and appointed in accordance with subsection two. Two members appointed by the Town of Drayton Valley, one member from its municipal council, and one member at large selected in the manner it determines appropriate. The membership for Ms. Jeanette Vader, Community at Large for the Town of Drayton Valley expires as of October 31st, 2023. The position was advertised and one application was received by Ms. Jeanette Mater requesting reappointment. Council recommends that, administration recommends that council reappoint Ms. Jeanette Mater.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. So are there any questions? Counselor Maggie? Okay. I guess go ahead if there's no questions. We have two mics on. I'm not sure if they have any questions or comments. Perfect. No, please go ahead, Counselor Maggie.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Gomana. I would
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Gomana. I would make a motion that council reappoint Jeanette Fader to the board for a one-year term effective October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. With the comment, Jeanette's been with both the board and the community for, for many, many years. I do think the, the change now with Monica going in as Brazu Foundation member. I know she'll do a wonderful job. I think it's important that, that continuity because she does have a history of what's happening at Shangri-La and the rest of the seniors housing. So I'll offer this recommendation. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Maggie. I agree with that comment about Jeanette being on that board for a number of years. Is there any other comments or questions? Counselor Ballas?
I totally support the reappointment. My question would be, is there other vacancies then?
We have, we appoint one from the town, and I'm not sure why we appoint them yearly, but we do. And then we, of course, appoint in the organizational meeting Brazu appoints one from at-large there. And that's, that's been appointed. So we have a new member joining from Brazu. And Cody Brooks as the member from Brazu will be there. And the, the current mayor of Breton, but she is not going to run as the mayor at the moment. So she's, she'll come back as well. So Breton's engaged and involved.
Thank you. And as for the one year, I believe that's an ask from Ms. Vader. She has put for one-year term. That's why it's one-year term, as far as I understand. Is there any other comments or questions? I'll go ahead, Counsel Evans.
Somewhat unrelated comment, but this is the amount of paper that was attached to this decision. I don't think that we necessarily need to see the, the Alberta Housing Act, the whole kind of policy, et cetera, for the foundation, et cetera. I think administration can probably give us the information we need from those. And again, it's minor, but I just see, man, this, this agenda is just full of scrap paper as far as I'm concerned. We didn't even look at any of those things, really. And once again, administration is perfectly capable of giving us the bits and pieces we need out of those. That's it for me.
Just one comment to that. And I do agree that sometimes we have to decide how much we want to put in. The only, the real benefit to having it there is for members of the public that might be accessing our agendas. But yeah, yeah, you're correct. There's sometimes maybe too much information, but just to keep that in mind.
I, I realize that. I go ahead and say that. The next time you bring something to us, we'll say, well, where's the act or where's the legislation? I'm hoping we won't get there. I just looked at sort of what was presented here and the decision we're making. And, and yeah, it just seemed a little in excess. That's all.
Thank you, Council Evans, for that observation. I guess there's no other questions or comments. I'll ask the question. There's a motion on the floor. All in favor? That's unanimously carried. Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to nine point three, Early Childhood Development Centre Board Amendment amending by law. I have Ms. Strand's name to present to as well.
That's correct.
Thank you.
As per the amending by law two thousand twenty-two dash sixteen dash C to the Early Childhood Development Centre Board ECDC by law two thousand eight dash zero one dash C, the ECDC board is comprised of five members of the public and one member of town council. There is a request from administration with support of the ECDC board, as well as Brazu County to amend the composition of the ECDC board to add one member from Brazu County Council, who shall be appointed at their annual organizational meeting. This addition would serve to further strengthen, strengthen the relationship and support the direction, development, and operations of municipal daycare and for our community. So the new amendment would then read, the board shall be comprised of as follows, one member of town council and one member of Brazu County Council shall be appointed for a one-year term at their annual organizational meeting of their respective councils. In the event that councillor is appointed by town or county council ceases to be a councillor, his or her appointment shall be deemed terminated and the town or county council shall reappoint a replacement councillor for the balance of their term. The recommendation, or I guess next steps would be Brazu County Council will be informed of council's decision and should the bylaw be passed, the new county council representative will receive an orientation and be invited to the next ECDC board meeting in November. So the recommendation is that council have first, second, and third reading to by law two zero two-three dash zero one dash C as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Strand. Any questions or comments on that? Seeing none, is there anybody who'd like to make a motion? Counselor Sheriffs.
I'll make a motion that the council give first, second, and third reading to by law two thousand twenty-three oh one dash C as presented.
Do we have to do them separate or can we do it together?
This one can be done together.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Counselor Sheriffs. Any questions, comments on that motion?
I do believe that they have already appointed somebody in advance of this. So I believe it's Donna Wilte. Right? So that person's waiting.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for that, Counselor Clark. If there's no comments or questions, I'll ask the question again. All in favor? Carried unanimously. Thank you. Nine point four, decision item, FCSAS Board Appointments. Again, Ms. Strand.
Town by law two thousand eighteen dash fourteen dash B requires that the Drayton Valley District Family Community Support Services FCSAS Board consists of seven members who shall be appointed by resolution of town council for either a one, two, or three-year term. When vacancies occur, applicants for FCSAS Board membership must meet the criteria stated in the FCSAS by law, including place of residence and age group category. As per the FCSAS by law, board members are then selected based on their active interest in FCS activities and community development as a whole. So we do have some vacancies as of October thirty-first. The membership for Sandra Blades, Drayton Valley Community Member at Large expires as of yesterday. And the position was advertised and one application was received from Sandra Blades. The membership for Wendell Smith, Senior's Representative expires as of October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. The position was advertised and one application was received from Wendell Smith. The membership for Hannah Luckball, Youth Representative expires as of October thirty-first. The position was advertised and one application was received from Alyssa Codic. Both Sandra and Wendell have been on the board for, for quite some time and, and have really proved to serve us well as far as the board goes. Alyssa Codic, again, I, I think it will be advantageous to have her on both the Youth Advisor Committee as well as the FCSAS Board. Hannah Luckwell has always also been with us for quite some time. However, she is now an employee. So that was her reason for not reapplying. So we welcome her aboard. So the recommendations is that council reappoint Sandra Blades as Drayton Valley Community Member at Large Representative for a one-year term, to reappoint Wendell Smith as Senior's Representative for a three-year term, and appoint Alyssa Codic as Youth Representative for a three-year term to the Drayton Valley District FCSAS Board.
Thank you, Ms. Strand. Any questions or comments for administration? No? Can somebody make a motion then? Counselor Sheriffs.
All right. I'll make a motion that the council reappoint Sandra Blades as Drayton Valley Community Member at Large Representative for a one-year term, reappoint Wendell Smith as Senior, Senior's Representative for a three-year term, and appoint Alyssa Codic as Youth Representative for a three-year term to the Drayton Valley and District FCSAS Board.
Thank you, Council Sheriffs. Any comments or questions on that motion? I'll just add to that what Ms. Strand mentioned, you know, both Sandra and Wendell has been on the committee for a while. And then Alyssa is going to join the committee. So I'm in favor of this for sure. If there's no questions or comments, I'll ask the question. All in favor? Let's carry unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Strand. There's the, the next decision item. Again, Ms. Strand, Early Childhood Development Centre Board Member Appointment.
Okay, we have also had a couple of vacancies come up in the Drayton Valley Early Childhood Development Board. As per the bylaw, the composition of the board consists of five community at large members, one councillor and now one Brazu County councillor. The members shall be appointed by resolution by town council for either a one, two, or three-year term. There are currently two vacant positions. One of those which was, was expired, that of Hadley Birch, and one new position, as there was a vacant one, a received application from Riley, I'm not sure how to stay here last, Latere. Riley has no preference and administration recommends a two-year term. And Hadley would like to be reappointed for a one-year term. So recommendation is that council appoint Riley Lador for a two-year term and reappoint Hadley Birch for a one-year term to the Early Childhood Development Centre Board. And I just want to note that I'm really pleased to see the number of parents that are now getting on, on side with being on the board. It really makes a difference in, in every way to have community members with lived experience be at that decision-making table. So.
Thank you, Ms. Strand. Any questions or comments to the administration? Okay, if there's none, can somebody make a motion then? Sure, Counsel Evans, sorry.
I'll make the motion that council appoint Riley Lontandra for a two-year term and reappoint Hadley Birch for a one-year term to the Early Childhood Development Centre Board.
Thank you, Council Evans. Any questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask the question. All in favor? Thank you. Carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Right. That's a complaint of the day.
Again, sorry to keep hammering away on this, but i- if we just have the application and confirmation that administration received letters of support or reference, in my mind, that would be enough. I don't know about everybody else, but I don't need to read the letters of reference. I'll, I'll, I'll take administration's word that these are decent people that we're, that we're recommending.
Thank, thank you for that. Okay. So now we'll move on to our next decision item. Nine point six, Proposed Forty-Ninth Street Naming. Mr. Hans Van Cleveren. Morning.
Good morning, Deputy Mayor, and of course, the rest of council. So basically, in front of you, you have a request that has been with us for a little bit. So administration has been approached by a community member for the street naming of Forty-Ninth Street to be named Drake's Street in memory, let's say, memory of the Drake's family, as the Drake House is also situated at that location. There's a history that's worth mentioning, and you see over there in this regard. So basically, the family, William and Dora Drake, settled in the powerhouse. It's basically now known as Drayton Valley back in nineteen oh seven, operating the post office and the grocery store out of their little, basically cabin home. They built a new home on the northwest corner of Fifty and Fiftieth in nineteen thirty. And while that was first in the post office and general store, that house was moved to Forty-Ninth Street back in nineteen fifty-five. It's been a residential home as since, and it's been also recognized during our campaign of communities in bloom as a historical site. So it's a significant site in history of Drayton Valley. In case of a naming of a street, there's a photo attached at the end of the report as well because we've seen an example that's already in place as such in the community. There's a policy in place, and the policy is attached as well, but there are certain items, several sections in there that are applicable when a community requests for naming a street comes forward. And town administration reviewed those. According to section two point five, the name change will not affect postal services. So that's important for the public to know when there's a name, of course, changing in your street. But in this case, the naming will be, of course, accompanied by the number of the street itself. So postal services won't change in that regard. For the people living on that street, it still remains Forty-Ninth Street. But administration is asking council's consideration and approving this name change. It has financial consequence that you see over there in the report as well. But those financial consequences can be carried in the current, basically, budget. There's a budget for a street naming. Every sign that is, of course, on the, along Forty-Ninth has to be changed. They are a little bit under a hundred dollars installed and produced, but there are ten of those in the intersections along Forty-Ninth, all the way from south to north. So that means this budget can be carried in the operational budget by the Public Works Department. It will stay below a thousand dollars. So with that, of course, taking all the considerations in the policy that's still applicable in front of you, council, sorry, administration recommends that council approve the street naming change of Forty-Ninth Street to Drake's Street, between brackets, Forty-Ninth Street. There are some alternatives over there, and it's good to mention that we talk, of course, with Growth Services. We support them because it was a little bit between our two departments. And we had contact over time with Suzanne Homme as well in this sense. But it's important to recognize that the community, or at least the family and the people involved with the Drake's family, support this name change and request that. So with that, there's any questions from council?
Thank you, Ms. Hans Van Cleveren. Is there any questions? Counsel Evans?
I'm just reading Responsibilities, section nine in the report there. All information considered by council regarding the naming of an asset, which may include the option of naming or renaming after an individual or organization, shall be treated confidentially and be discussed in camera. Does that not apply here?
Sorry. Thank you for that question. If there's any additional information that should be discussed in camera, then it will be brought forward.
Okay, I just wasn't sure if it was the whole process needed to be done in camera and then come out to make the decision on.
Correct. Okay. Yes. In this case, there was none.
Thank you, Counsel Evans. Any other questions? Counsel Clark?
Does this fit at all with Community Foundation's drive to do the street sign naming program, whatever we call that?
Thank you, Counselor Clark, for that question and to the rest of council. So like I said, this request was already in the works earlier before this, let's say, plan was brought forward by the Community Foundation to take on the street naming as an opportunity for fundraising. So this request is separate from that. But it's important to know, of course, that the current policy addresses this type of street naming in front of you. With the Community Foundation, there will be a whole process to take a look into the policy, of course. And that's why we work with the Growth Services Department. But it will be separate. So this street naming will be in place, of course, separate from that. And the Community Foundation will be a completely different process.
Yeah, go ahead.
Two more things. One, Drake's plural versus Drake. Is there a reason for that? And then secondly, are we stuck on street? Are we okay with like a drive or boulevard or something else?
So thank you. Yes, we looked at, of course, at that. So it's basically Drake's. So it's basically in memory of the whole family and the plural in that sense. It does pronounce a little bit awkward as well, of course, Drake's Street. But most likely in the, like ongoing when people say, hey, where do you live? I live at Drake's. So that makes sense, of course, that it's a plural. But yeah, we looked at it. Of course, it's the freedom of council to determine the correct name. If council says Drake makes more sense for us as the family name was Drake, that's. If council says Drake makes more sense for us as the family name was Drake, that's a possibility, but proposal is to be Drake's Street.
Okay, thank you, Council Clark. Any other questions? Council Maggie?
Just to follow up, I think to Council Evans' question on, so I'm expecting once this begins to be opened up, that we will have other people saying, okay, what about me? And so we'll start to see all of that sort of occur. It's relatively simple, straightforward, cost-effective. To Council Clark's point, the there there may be some opportunity, I think, for revenue generation is where I think the Community Foundation is around signage, so we probably have to incorporate a bit of a discussion around that. That's really my only comment, and I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, Council Maggie, if there's.
All right.
Does anybody else have a question? Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, I I agree with Council Clark. I don't know about the, are we all agreed that Drake's Street is is the preference? The family name is Drake, correct?
That's correct.
So this is sort of the possessive Drake, Drake's Street. I I I don't know, in my mind, the family name is what we're getting out there. Drake Street makes more sense to me. But, or Drake Drive, it's got a good ring to it. But anyway, Drake seems seems as opposed to Drake's seems makes more sense to me. I don't know what the rest of council feels like, but we should establish that before we make the motion, I guess, eh?
Thank you for that. Is there, Council Ballas?
Thank you. I feel that we should possibly have a discussion with the Drayton Valley Community Foundation and to see what they have for a planned location as well before we make a decision on this.
Uh, yeah, I I did have a conversation with Rob already, and he sees this as a legacy naming and sees no, no issue like from their end in terms of letting this one go as a legacy naming rather than a for-profit or a fundraising effort. So if 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 council were to go out and try to name a bunch of other streets like clearly before the sponsorship agreement could be reached, and that would maybe be a different story, but in terms of this specific one, I did bring it up just so that they didn't have to find out after the fact, and he he said he understood and was in support of this specific legacy naming.
Thank you. I guess there's still a Council Evans' question we need to discuss and also about the question that Council Ballas mentioned, you know, from now until we actually come to an agreement with the Community Foundation, if we, when we approve this one, if we approve this one, then would there be more coming to council as well? So is there any input from administration for shed some light on those?
Thank you for that question. So our last, or basically the most recent request came forward in two oh eight. So there's not a other lineup of requests as such known to us. So basically, that's not the case in this, at this moment.
And to add to that, most I don't have a number of percent, but many of our our founders or our first few mayors, their names already. We have like Mackenzie Ave, we already have many of them named. So I I don't see a similar to this there being a whole lineup in terms of the legacy represented here. I I don't, yeah, we don't see that as a risk, but it is a valid point.
Okay, so before we go to the motion, you know, about Drake Street or Drake Drive, is there any suggestions other than Drake Street, Council?
As for the plural, when we look at Meyer, we look at Mackenzie, we look at Frog, I'm looking at Seth, all those street names, none of them are are plural, right? So I think we just kind of keep with what we've done. Street to me just seems boring, that's all. I'm kind of a fan of maybe Drive or something like that, so.
I guess, you know, from from the request side, would there be any objection to changing that, would you think?
Thank you for that. As you see, of course, the example with Seth Street is staying street. I think it might be more confusing for the public as well if it has Drake Avenue, between brackets, Ninety, Forty-Ninth Street, because it still stays a street for the postal code and for the naming that we have for our streets going south-north. Yeah, so taking a completely different name with both, let's say, the clarification behind them, Drake Avenue, between brackets, Forty-Ninth Street, would be in administration's op- opinion, confusing.
Yeah, yeah.
So picking Boulevard or Way or Drive, that might not interfere with the north-south and east-west streets and avenues.
I guess that would be the question. Council Maggie, I guess, close yours. You can make the motion and we'll go from there.
I would make a recommendation that council approve the street name change of Forty-Ninth Street to Drake Street.
Hey, any questions or comments on that motion? Given. The the notion is that we will keep the Forty-Ninth Street as is, as for the for the maps and and for regular purposes, right?
Correct. The naming will be placed on the signs as per policy both. So if council says Drake Street, it will be still signed as Drake Street, between brackets, Forty-Ninth Street.
Thank you. Okay, seeing there's no other questions, I'll ask the question. All in favor? It's carried unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Hans Van Cleveren. The next one is an very important item. Nine point seven, appointment of Deputy Mayor. I guess the, Ms. Thompson, you'll be presenting that.
First of all, thank you to Amilega Manah, our deputy mayor, outgoing deputy mayor, for your time served, and this is where we rotate to a new deputy mayor. So the MGA, section one fifty-two-one states that a council must appoint one or more councillors as deputy chief elected officials so that only one councillor will hold that office at any time. The office will be filled at all times. As per Policy C oh three fourteen, the position of deputy mayor for the town of Drayton Valley is held on a rotating basis for a term of eight months. The order of rotation is based on the number of votes each councillor received in the election, and the descending order is follows. Councillor Tom McGee, Councillor Bill Ballas, Councillor Amilega Manah, Councillor Colin Clark, Councillor Rick Evans and Councillor Monica Sheriffs. Within Policy C oh three fourteen, council may choose to change the order of appointments. And the next councillor up for the deputy mayor position is Councillor Colin Clark. So the recommendation is that council approve the appointment of Councillor Colin Clark as the deputy mayor for the period of November first, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. I agree and fully support that that transition in capable hands. Is there any councillor that would like to make a motion? Council Evans?
I'll gladly make the motion that council approved the appointment of Councillor Colin Clark as the deputy mayor for the period November first, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Council Evans. I guess I have to ask if there's any comments or questions on that motion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Yes, you can. Congratulations, councillor. Okay, perfect. Let's move to nine point eight. We have notice of disposition of lot six, block sixty-six, plan zero eight, four zero zero seven four, and that would be Mr. Douglas Woodlife.
Good morning, Deputy Mayor and Council. This decision item relates to the disposition of the municipal reserve designation on lot six, block sixty-six, plan oh eight four, zero zero seven four, or the Terra Loma lands. In twenty twenty-two, council approved the removal of municipal reserve gen- designation for these lands. The removal of the designation allows for the land to be disposed of and consolidated again with the neighboring parcels to better facilitate, facilitate future development. As part of this agreement, the landowner will apply ten percent municipal reserve, the future landowner will apply ten percent municipal reserve on the consolidated parcel so that the town can then take, again, take the reserve when it's developed further. pursuant to section seventy of Municipal Government Act, the municipal council must give notice when it intends to dispose of reserve lands for less than market value. The electorate was given sixty days to petition council on this disposit- disposition, and we did not receive any feedback or petition. And knowing that, administration recommends that council approve the disposition of lot six, block sixty-six, plan oh eight four, zero zero seven four, two point six nine acres in terms of the transfer of former reserve lands agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Woodlife. Is there any questions or comments on that? Or Mr. Woodlife or the administration?
Just, I guess, for the sake of clarification, because we've been talking about this for quite some time, is we are going down to the minimum requirement in terms of municipal reserve in this case, correct?
That's correct, ten percent.
Right, from fifteen, twenty, right?
Right.
Perfect, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or some, somebody make a motion? Okay, Council Clark?
I will move that council approve the disposition of lot six, block sixty-six, plan oh eight four, oh oh seven four, accepting thereout all mines and minerals area one point oh nine hectares or two point six nine acres, more or less, to Terra Loma Developments Limited in accordance with the terms and conditions in the transfer of former reserve lands agreement.
Thank you, Council Clark. Again, any questions or comments on the motion, council? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask the question. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you, Mr. Woodlife. We'll move on to nine point nine, Eventure Northwest Alberta Letter of Support, Ms. Thompson.
Thank you. The town of Drayton Valley has been an active member of the Eventura Advisory Committee since twenty twenty. Eventura is a partnership between municipalities in northwest Alberta, Alberta to develop an electric vehicle charging network that connects the region. The Community Energy Association, a nonprofit society that assists local communities in implementing climate-related initiatives, are acting as the project lead on the network. The goals for the network are to enhance tourism and economic development opportunities, facilitate the adoption of electric vehicles by residents, provide capacity building and training opportunities, and demonstrate innovative solutions for greenhouse gas emissions reductions. The C A, C E A is asking our council to support their request to the provincial government for capital funding to support the project the way of submission of the attached two letters signed by the mayor. So what we need from council is for for motions that you authorize the mayor to sign the support letters, two different ones, and attach our samples for your perusal.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Any questions for administration? Council Ballas?
Does that mean we're also committing forty thousand dollars?
No, this is just to advocate for funding at this point.
But once we advocate for funding and they say, yes, you go ahead and Drayton Valley is chosen as a location, are we not saying that we are agreeing that we're going to put a charging station in at our cost of forty thousand dollars?
Well, that that would then come as a decision to council. This, this doesn't commit us to that. This is, once the funding is in place at that point, we would then commit to to bring them here, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Council Maggie?
Oh, very. Do you have a sense of timing?
I do not. I do not. I apologize.
No, no.
I think, I think in the next couple of years, I think, is the hope in the next year or so, but it has been an ongoing project, so I don't want to say timing because Kundi did not update me on specific timing, if if he's aware.
Thank you for that. No question. Maybe Council Maggie, you are going to make a motion?
I will.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Gomana, I would make a motion, the first motion reading, that council authorize the mayor to sign the funding request letter to Government of Alberta Ministers on behalf of council in support of the Community Energy Association Northwest Alberta EV Charging Station Network Project set out in attachment number one. Equally, we only two motions. The second motion is that council authorize the mayor to sign the funding request letter to the Member of the Legislative Assembly of Alberta for Drayton Valley, Devon, which is Andrew Bojanko, on behalf of council in support of the Community Energy Association Northwest Alberta EV Charging Station Network Project set out in attachment two.
Thank you, Council Maggie, for both motions. Is there any questions or comments on those motions? I see there's a little bit of a discussion there. Council Clark, you have a question or Council Ballas?
Yeah, I I'm still concerned with that forty thousand dollars because when I'm reading the first letter, and it says, we the partners acknowledge the benefit of approaching regional initiatives collaboratively and therefore confirm our commitment to the regional collaboration by committing forty thousand dollars of initial seed funding to develop the strategy and funding proposal for the implementation phase.
I believe that's, this is project was already in the works. Th- this is just an advocate for the funding. I don't think, I think that's already a a done deal. But I can take it back to confirm. Because they, they, these are letters to advocate for, or for funding, two point five million dollars and four point four million dollars. Uh, but I I do not believe that this is committing us to forty thousand dollars.
I would like clarification on that before I prepare to commit.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Council Ballas. Council Maggie?
Can I ask a question? If in fact it does commit us, would you vote differently?
Probably.
Okay, Council Clark?
And I do think it's probably worth determining whether that forty thousand is strictly from Drayton Valley or if it's from the partnership, because I think there's six or seven municipalities that have committed, so I think if we could say it's five or six thousand bucks versus forty, that's more palatable to me than forty.
Thank you, Council Clark. So just from my understanding, Ms. Thompson, we we are requesting funds from the provincial government, and that probably will be matching funds that we need to we need to put, right? Or where where would this forty thousand go?
No, it's not matching. We're asking for like the the project lead is asking for this money. And it it's not a matching, it's the organization, and that that's moving this forward in partnership with Atco. And I believe Fortis is coming on board as well. After this was done, we have had conversations with Fortis, but it's not a matching, like it's not going to require two and a half million from the communities involved.
No, right, but for the for the EV unit that we have here, I don't know what's the value of that unit itself. I'm sorry, I didn't hundred grand. Okay, so then forty thousand from the community and then sixty thousand from the funding, probably, that's how it's.
They're, yeah, they're raising funds from the provincial government. I just need to clarify the forty thousand because I don't have a solid answer on if that's everyone or if that's just us, or this letter wouldn't be necessarily committing us to that forty. That would have to be a budgetary consideration that council would have to make as well. But if council's not ready to make that decision before you have that answer, then I do agree that we should find that out first if that's going to change council's decision.
I guess let's ask the council if there's any questions or Council Evans?
Yeah, just looking at the letter, I mean, it says Atco's committed to providing fifty percent for the four point four million dollar project. So if there's two point two million from them, and they're also, what they're seeking here is two and a half million from the Government of Alberta, so that covers the entire. So that covers the entire four point four quite handily. I still agree that we need clarification on that forty thousand, if that's split between all the participating groups, or they're looking for that from each group. But it looks like all the money's been covered either by Atco or the funding request to the provincial government, so.
Right, right. So I guess the question, okay, go ahead.
So there's two letters. Are we looking for just one to be sent or both?
Both.
Okay. I guess I saw it read somewhere in here that it was looking for somebody to champion from the Treasury Board. Right? I know Andrew is on the Treasury Board, so I think that's a pretty easy answer to that one, if that's what we're looking for.
Okay, so we have a motion floor. We can ask the question, defeat it and table if you'd like to, or make a friendly amendment.
I would recommend to not defeat the motion. Defeating the motion would defeat, yeah, defeat this from coming forward, so.
Okay, so.
An amendment would be great.
Can it be withdrawn because it's already made?
Yeah, you haven't voted on it yet.
Okay, so Councilor Maggie, are you? I guess, I guess, can somebody make the tabling motion? So it goes to table, right? And then that comes prior to?
The next council meeting, correct?
Okay, so if somebody makes a tabling motion, then that's it, that's it.
Can I make that motion to table this motion?
Thank you, Councilor Clark. Hey, there's no other communication or discussion on a tabling motion, so I'll ask the question. All in favor?
Thank you.
Get that motion tabled. Thank you. We'll move on to nine point ten, quarter three financial report and project update. We have, again, Ms. Thompson, gonna give us that update.
Thank you. So I'm going to go over the quarter three update, and we'll start right at the top. We have a slightly less amount of net revenue in the general revenue section. A few reasons for that, one being the franchise fees, timing of franchise fees, and the second being the property tax assessments happening after, like, during the year. So we get an assessment rate, we tax people on those assessments, and then they have, they can appeal, and sometimes there are assessments that change after budget is set. And then moving on to general administration, we have, in the general administration area is the big area that is under budget, and the reason for that being vacancies in the CAO, I guess, my position covering two roles. We're seeing a decrease in the general administration, mostly in wages. Protective services, in the top section, in the police section, the grants, that's a timing thing. We get the municipal police grants towards the end of the year. So we're not expecting to have a decrease in revenue there. And then the, moving on to the expenses, we had a credit this year. I know the mayor's mentioned it, and I've mentioned it a few times, that there was some savings in our RCMP costs this year. So rather than having at very year end, rather than having an adjustment up, we had an adjustment down, which is great to see, doesn't happen very often. So that is a reason why the police expenses are lower. And of course, you see, under disaster and emergency, we have it being significantly over budget. And again, as council's well aware, we did have a wildfire incident and had costs that were paid out. Now, this includes the cost physically paid by the Channadrain Valley, some of which are not going to be covered by the grant, some of which, some of which are going to be covered by the grant. However, keeping in mind that even though some of these expenses will be covered by the grant, we will have additional expenses that will have to be for our portion because the county did pay all costs except our human resource costs upfront. We're expecting that, I'm expecting that to be our costs at the end of the day to be between six hundred and seven hundred and fifty thousand, but still an estimate. Moving on to transportation, nothing really big to note in the revenues. In the expenses, you'll see that the common services, which are like our public works, shop and yard and equipment and all those expenses are right on track. Road, street, sidewalks, under budget so far, and the reason for that is that the timing of snow expenses are elevated during the next few months. So of course, hoping that will be under budget, but not necessarily expecting it. It's hard to predict what kind of snowfall we'll have. And moving on to utilities, we are slightly ahead in revenues and slightly below on expenses, leading us to have a greater net revenue position as of the end of quarter three. Nothing really, like, nothing big to note as to the reason why, just in all areas, just slightly better than expected. I mean, surprising in a way, we did see lower water revenues coming in because of usage during the fire, but likely some associated decrease in costs during that time as well. Not in terms of the organization, just in terms of what's categorized underwater expenses. Moving on to community services, so you'll see FCSS, that the actual revenue is quite a bit higher than what is in the budget. And of course, I say this every time, but the timing of grants through FCSS isn't always the way you expect. Sometimes you get the grant in the month before or after we have it budgeted, and that's the reason for that. And you'll see that the expenses is slightly higher as well, ahead of time. And again, just to clarify, FCSS, there is a net amount that council contributes every year, and that amount is held well. So if council, it's around forty eight thousand, that's what council commits. Every other fluctuation in expenses are covered by the grants that come in. Community services, little ahead, a little over budget, not huge. And then, of course, ACDC, the revenue is slightly ahead, and the expenses are slightly ahead as well, so they match, they even out. Affordable housing, you'll see one sixty seven in net revenues at the end of the quarter and one sixty four in expenses. And of course, affordable housing is supposed to be paying for itself, so you'll, we want to see them fairly close, we want to see the expenses lower. We do have a little bit of reserves to make back, but it's good to see that the expenses are lower than the revenues. Moving on to planning and development, the revenues, similar to what was budgeted, little lower. And then the expenses, the biggest variance are in the economic development and education fields. Economic development is low due to vacancies for a large part of the year. And education, of course, council commits a certain amount of money for the zero fee tuition, and there hasn't been a year-to-date where we have used up the funds that council has dedicated to that, just not enough programs and students running during a single year. And last is parks and recreation. Revenues are slightly behind and expenses are slightly ahead of budget. So if you go through, there are some reasons for that in terms of timing of hockey season or ice season, I guess you could say. So nothing, nothing, nothing that really stands out there and expecting it to be right around budget towards the end of the year. For the pool, just to highlight that, the revenues are quite a bit higher than expected. And again, council during, I believe it was in March, maybe in February or March, decided that let's expand, like, extend the opening hours to give residents more opportunity to use the pool. So the revenues are higher, which is great, with the understanding that the wage costs are also higher. So you see that as well. And that's the end of that, which, if you go to the last page, I think it's two hundred and thirty-eight on your agenda, page six of my report. Net year-to-date, we're ahead by two hundred and forty-two thousand, which, there are some timing things towards the end of the year, some projects, some one-time projects operating in nature that perhaps haven't been completed, so we'll see that evening out. But overall, still impressive to see as, knowing that we had a wildfire and that we had more expenses than what the contingency was. So that's still really, I'm very happy to see where we're at with that. And the next page is the financial information, so just some key balances to keep in mind. So our receivables, you'll see that in the end of September this year, the receivables were a lot less. And of course, the reason for that is that we've cleaned up our receivables from the county. That's part of the big reason. Utility receivables, very similar, and tax receivables, very similar from last year. That's kind of where we see that balance at this time of the year. So utilities changes a little bit depending on the time of year, but taxes really changes depending on the time of year. So levy taxes in May, we'll see that balance decrease throughout the year and be at its all-time low in the following May or at the beginning of May. Other liabilities, deferred revenue, this is revenues we've received, but yeah, not yet spent. So MSI, gas tax, all those types, or some sponsorships, donations, those types of revenues that we've received and are committed to projects, but you just haven't yet been spent. So the biggest part of that is gas tax, we've been saving that up for our fiftieth AV and project, and we will be expending that this year, or starting to at least. And our debenture balance, we have not debentured anything new this year, so making payments, our debenture balance decreases. And of course, our bank balance, we see it slightly higher than last year, which is really good, but also with the knowledge that we've received some funding, like, when I talked about that deferred revenue balance, those are funds that are in our bank, but that have already been committed to projects that are not our money, that have been, that are being allocated by the government. So we're essentially holding that money in the meantime for projects. Still, still a good bank balance, still very good, especially seeing that we're receiving some really good interest rates on that money right now. Speaking of grants, so right now, we're not expecting, we have some receivables from Brazu County just in terms of our, like, cost-sharing day-to-day, like, we always have something there from the last quarter. That's captured up in our general receivables. And then MSI, capital and operating, we've received both those grants for the year. They're already in our bank, so they're no longer receivable for this year. But we are still expecting the previously known as gas tax, currently known as community, I don't know what the other C stands for, building fund, which is four hundred and fifty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-three. And then, of course, in our reserves, not a surprise to council, went from twelve million to eight point seven million at the end of two thousand and twenty-two, largely because we had been building up and saving up for the pool, and we have now built it. And also with the knowledge that we like to see that balance around ten million, but eight point seven million all in all isn't, it's not a terrible number by any means, just slightly lower and not surprising as well with inflation costs and COVID and building the new pool. That's, that's a, a lot of municipalities are seeing this kind of trend. Go to the next page, it's our capital's budget summary. So this is where all the capital budgets, our capital projects that we've been working on in two thousand and twenty-three that were approved by council.
Can council ask a question?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Question, where does Travis, where do you throw that?
Travis will be going into an internally restricted reserve, yeah. During our next strategic, excuse me, during our next strategic planning day, I'll be bringing to council the list of reserves, balances, what we're planning to contribute, and the trends. And so you will see all the reserves that are listed inside our internally restricted reserves, meaning that council can choose to move those around if they choose so. So you say the Travis funds are supposed to be used on protective equipment. Council is internally restricting it and can choose to move that to something else should they choose to do so. Externally restricted is in terms of utilities and things that we're putting away for utilities. So revenue, our reserves that are being put away from water revenues and sewer revenues are to be put away for those types of projects, and those are considered externally restricted. Any other questions on that section? Okay, so capital budget, I don't think I'm going to go into a ton of detail throughout. So I'll highlight that all the, most of the projects are ongoing and expected to be completed this year. The CTC cameras and furnishings were put off until, you know, we had full-time staff there and could kind of lead that project. The cameras will be encapsulated into our larger security cameras project. It makes sense in terms of cost and making sure that the software they use and it's the way they're accessing it makes sense for our organization as a whole. And so that's being worked on, but just no money is spent there. And the fire pumper is in the, they're like, I guess, customizing it and ordering it and stuff, but we're not expecting to get that until next year. Bunker gear, it has been ordered, we just have not received the gear or the invoice yet. And the fire training facility, I touched a bit on this earlier this week, but we have not yet been able to move forward. There's, there's still some questions into, in terms of where it's going to be going. And then, of course, the security, the security cameras, the team has, okay, I don't want to get this wrong. So we hired someone to evaluate project, the locations, costs and all that, and they've brought forward a recommendation and ordering the equipment is coming next, correct? So that's moving forward. The Park Valley Pool Repurpose, we talked about this as well. We haven't spent money on that evaluation yet. Parks and Rec, that one's done, so I will move ahead to the scoreboard, also delayed. It just takes, when we got to ordering it, I think it was like six months before we were going to get it, and then we have to time when it makes sense to install it because, of course, that's going to disrupt the ice time. So I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Hans, over Christmas is the hope, correct? Moving on to sidewalks and trails, now this project, the full project was committed, like, the funds, only part of which are going to be happening or had happened already in two thousand and twenty-three, it's just the timing was October, and so it wasn't caps, the costs aren't captured here, but we did complete the two thousand and twenty-three portion of the trails rebuild. And fiftieth AV East, of course, a lot of the costs and the invoices are being paid, have been paid in October or are being paid in November, so you'll see those costs jump up. And really, nothing else to note, everything's going forward. Most projects are being worked on, the snow dump and the wastewater facility upgrades, those are deferred. So the wastewater facility upgrades is a grant, and we are finishing it up in two thousand and twenty-five when cell six is going to be decommissioned. And then the snow dump, just we have not had, I guess, the resources or hasn't been deemed as priority as of yet, but I believe that the goal is to tackle that in two thousand and twenty-four. And so as of September thirtieth, we spent one point eight million in capital projects, but as of the date I pulled this report, which was late last week, we actually had already spent two point five million, mostly on the landfill projects and our, the landfill, the new cell and fiftieth AV. Those are our big projects that we're expending, expanding money for right now. Any questions on capital?
Any questions, council? Hello, Maggie?
Deputy Mayor Gamana, a question around the Ricochet Pool. Do we have any holdbacks on the pool?
Correct.
And we also have some outstanding issues that they're still redoing or whatever they, forgotten what, how I put that.
Warranty, yeah, yeah, we're working through some warranty issues, we have the year to do so. So anything sort of that goes wrong right now, we always address to see if this, you know, push for it to be uncovered under warranty, and a lot of it has been. It's also talking to Kelsey, and she's worked at other, like, large facilities, and it's not unusual to see. working out some kinks in the first year. There's a lot of like humidity and you know, I don't even know all the technical terms, but there's a lot happening in a pool that's really hard on equipment and you just have to kind of work through some of the issues. So I think they're making, I really good headways in working through some of these issues and making sure that they happen before the warranty comes to them. Uh, the we don't have a ten percent holdback on the entire project, but we do have a holdback that we are just going to make sure that we're satisfied with the project before we release. Not that it has been an issue to this point. It's just that, you know, some final costs, working through some final things with them, um, before we release the holdback.
Good, thank you. Uh, CCBF is the Canada Community Building Fund.
Canada. Yes. Yeah, that was the formal, formerly known as gas tax that they renamed.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions? I guess about the, the pool again, you know, just we had, we run into a couple of issues. Um, and we are probably close to that year arc. Four months exactly, right? So. Okay, um, would there be kind of a some kind of a test for the equipment just before the warranty expires, just to make sure that they are on working order? I guess what, what I'm getting at is that, you know, two months after the warranty period, if something happens, right? Then, then it's, it's a false on us. Thank you. Thank you, Hans.
Thank you for that question, Deputy Mayor. Um, so basically, uh, we will see in January, a, uh, we call it a mini, miniature shutdown. So that means that, uh, we get the bigger construction, uh, and installation companies in there to make sure that, uh, the last walkthroughs are done. Uh, that's a normal procedure basically before your warranty is over. So that's a big item to make sure that we, uh, tick off all the boxes. And like, uh, our acting CEO said, we are, uh, working through some of the items still. And we were basically, uh, of course, waiting for a cold snap, uh, to make sure that the things that have been done in the meantime, uh, that we addressed already on, under warranty are working out.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you for that. Um, I think it's, it's important that committee knows that we proceed that as well. Um, any other questions? Phil, you look like you have a question? Oh, councilor.
Just the sidewalk and trails program. So are, are, are we gonna spend that? That one point two? I mean, we've got a, we've got a pretty good chunk of change left there to, to get through.
Yeah. So I, I, I don't think it was quite half and half, but most of the trail projects were going to happen this year and then some were going to happen next year. So that's the total cost of both years. So one project over two years. So that's not going to be all expended this year, definitely not. And also knowing that this one point two million is about, I, I want to say seventy-three percent grant funded. Is that correct, Shelley? Sixty percent.
Oh, and the grant's fine with us, just stretching it over a couple of years.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Ready? Gotcha. Okay. So we're chipping away at it every year, trying to get pieces done whenever we can. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, councilor Evans. Thank you, Shelley, as well. Um, any other questions? If not, can somebody make a motion to?
I will quickly highlight some other projects if that's okay.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I'll skip over the capital because I've, I've kind of addressed them as well already here. So we'll move to the operating projects. Which start on page four of seven, if you look at the bottom of the sheet. So the, uh, implemented, implementation of the compensation program has been completed. So that was, uh, the grid project that was brought forward through, um, last year's budget. The merit increase program has been completed and the organizational-wide training for twenty-twenty-three was completed yesterday, was our final training session. And it was it really, really well. I think that the team learnt a lot and I think it, I think everyone, it was, it was largely based on, um, compatibility and working with different styles, leadership styles as you. And I think it, it, I, I certainly learnt a lot and I think the team did as well. Website updates are in, um, progress. So the events cal- calendar has been updated and the recreation page revamp is completed. Uh, the Facebook integration portion is in progress. You currently have the town's Facebook feed on the homepage of the website and we're working on adding the feeds for enforcement, Omniplex Pool Gym, MCC and their corresponding pages on the website. And so far, the enforcement one has been completed. Municipal branding, so that one I, I addressed. I just got a message from Jen and the Facebook integration has been completed now. So, thank you. The municipal facility branding, uh, that one has been on hold and we will need to um, reevaluate council's strategic priority when it comes to facility branding as well as a re-scope in project possibly in twenty-twenty-four. Uh, community engagement strategy, um, is complete. The engagement HQ platform launched at the end of March and the citizens budget platform launched during the quarter three and we actually just got the results from the citizens budget. And it's really interesting to see, and I can't wait for council to see the results as well. The youth advisory committee was formed, so that project is complete. Um, the historical, um, society contribution, so that was for the gazebo and that project didn't end up getting completed this year, so we've not spent those dollars yet. The maintenance department employee, that department is now complete. So we have three employees in that department and we're seeing like, uh, extensive operational efficiencies when it comes to our maintenance costs, which is really nice to see. The Omniplex door upgrades are complete. Um, the wall of fame that is still ongoing. Zero fee life court courses, uh, program registration opportunities, um, are prepared for incorporations and students can now apply for this program. Controlled crossings, so the signs have been ordered and are expected to be delivered October thirtieth. So I wrote this report last week. They're complete.
Excellent.
Uh, South sanitary trunk assessment. So that, that's in progress. The project, um, is almost completed, completed and we're expecting the report sometime in the next week. Weed spraying, so we, the, the project started off, so we sent people to do the course. Um, but then during weeds are interesting, you have to get them exactly in the right period of their growth and that happened to be during the wildfire. So we'll try again in twenty-twenty-four. Wastewater manhole lining is complete, uh, servicing town lands. Now I just want to make it clear that the twenty-twenty-three funds were spent on getting evaluation for all our town land. So in terms of the project to get land ready, I guess you could say is not complete, but the funds um, approved by council in twenty-twenty-three or for twenty-three, that has been spent and the report has been received. Uh, revital, downtown revitalization, we, that one was on hold until we could get, uh, staff, permanent staff hired, labor market study in progress. Um, airport also deferred until staff was hired, but now we're in the talks with the airport and we might go ahead. Um, it might not go ahead this year, but we were talking to them to get servicing to, um, electric, that electricity servicing to new, um, hangars. Fire parking lot upgrades. So this was, this is partially grant funded and we were not able to get to it because with the wildfire and then the staff being committed and overworked in the months to follow with monitoring the fire for as long as we did. We were not be able to get, to get it completed in twenty-twenty-three, but we have gotten approval from the government to extend it by a year. Yes, that's the parking lot upgrades and to do like a memorial for, yes, yeah. Yes. Yeah, sorry. And the final project is the CPO, uh, another CPO, um, council approved for us to hire a second CPO and he is hired. He is, um, how do you say it? He's, um, been a yeah, anyway, he has his authorization to be a CPO in our area. Uh, my brain is apparently not working right now, but so that department is fully staffed and which is really great to see because we started working on this early on in this year. So it's really great to see. And that's it for, um, all our operating projects. If you have any questions.
Thank you. Um, any questions, counsel? Is there more to your presentation? That, that's about it? Okay. Um, yeah, I guess somebody need to ask a question or make a motion, either or. Sure. Thank you, councilor Evans.
I'll make the motion that council approved the quarter three financial report and project update for information.
Perfect. Thank you, councilor Evans. Any questions or comments on that motion? Seeing none, I'll ask the question. All in favor? Thank you, Ms. Tom. Okay, um, I guess we'll, shall we break for lunch? Um, okay, we'll break for lunch and we'll come back at one. Perfect. Thank you. All additions items are done, so we are moving to department reports and we have Shelley from Municipal Services Department.
No. Uh, good afternoon, council. So for utilities, um, winterizing fire hydrants is completely for all town owned hydrants. A customer did reach out to our staff to have their hydrants winterized on their site. So that was actually completed yesterday. Vibration testing and flow meter verification and calibration has been completed at all facilities. Um, the vibration testing should read on pumps, not on fire hydrants. That's a typo by myself. Sorry about that. I know Rick is going to call me out on it, so I figured I'd just throw it out there. Um, Sager pilot is still working really well and removing ammonia well below our new limits. Um, raw water summer split pump was replaced on October twenty-sixth. Um, staff also pulled the remaining pumps, pumps to do, uh, an inspection on the condition to ensure we're not seeing the same issues occurring. Sa- staff also made a small modification to, uh, cooling sleeve on the pump to protect the pump from future failures. Um, acute lethality accelerated sampling has been completed as three consecutive passes, passes were obtained. I, we did ditch work, um, along the south property line at the wastewater plant. Um, this was brought up, um, as a concerning item with the neighboring property owner as water from our site was running into his property and he wanted this corrected. Carriganis have been planted along cell five berm to create a shelter belt for the neighboring property. Septing, septic receiving station is completed and back open. Our staff has actually used it and love it. They said it's, it's very well built, so they're very excited about, about the new, new upgrade there. Um, parks, Peace Park and West Valley Trail upgrades have been completed. A final walkthrough will be performed, um, the week of November sixth. Um, seeding was not completed as snow event prevented that from happening. So minor work in twenty-twenty-four will be completed on that. Snow removal and sanding of town-owned trails and sidewalks was underway after the last snow event. That's now since gone away since of our nice weather. All flower hanging baskets have been removed and flower beds are still being worked on. And parks have hired some new staff, so they're doing quite a bit of training right now. Um, public works, uh, pothole filling was completed. They actually completed that yesterday. Um, sanding after the snow event, so that was well underway to maintain our, our service level. All the signposts have been installed at the new school waiting grand opening. And then the signs will be actually put up once the grand opening happens. Um, staffer doing some training with skid steers and are ninety percent complete on deficiencies that were noted during their safety inspection. Um, landfill and engineering. Um, after fifty Ave walkthrough, some small deficiencies were listed. All deficiencies have been completed. Um, and we'll be meeting with our consultants on November seventh to finalize this grant for phase two in hopes that we can secure some grant funding for the, the second part of fifty Ave. Range Road seventy-three slope failure, geotechnical analysis is well underway to determine mode of failure and come up with a permanent solution to stop failures from occurring in the future. Um, operations at the landfill are still adding garbage to the new cell for insulation coverage to protect the liner from cold weather. Um, and free tipping days has been completed and operations have a plan in place for the next year's free tipping days to kind of help with the lineups that we've seen this year. And that's all.
Perfect. Thank you, Shelley. Are there any questions for Shelley? Okay, councilor Evans.
Shelley, are you, uh, so as far as the snow removals goes, after our going round and round last, uh, last time we looked at it, so are you, you're now going by the original snow removal policy that we set last year?
Correct.
Okay. And have we, have we gone around and informed the businesses that they're responsible?
We sent out letters to the, the owners, um, so they should have received those. We sent them out, the twentieth, um, so they, they should all have.
Okay, so that'll be in Tom's. Tom will have fun with that now, I guess, eh?
Yeah, we did however, talk to three nights about and, and they're good.
Okay.
Yeah, they're, they're fine with doing it. So we gave them enough notice this time, so.
Good, good. Yeah, that was part of the issue, obviously, but hopefully everybody, uh, everybody starts jumping on that. Uh, the Range Road seventy-three slope failure. So where, where does our boundary end going up seventy-three there?
Uh, at township four-nine-four. So that's just.
Just. Just in there.
Yeah, for the top of that hill, yeah. So there's that.
Cause four-nine-four kind of comes around, right?
Yeah, isn't four-nine-four the one that the county office is on? Yeah.
Yeah. So we go, oh, sorry, sorry. So we, that's all the way up to there is ours. Sorry, I thought it, I thought it was done the bottom of the hill. Okay, that's all I was curious about whether we could give this to somebody else.
No dice.
Thank you, councilor Evans. Any questions, uh? Also, fuck.
Um, so a couple of things, Peace Park, you just jogged my memory there. There's, so there's two light standards in the middle of the field there on the east side of that hill in Peace Park.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Why do we have two lights in the middle of the field?
It's a great question. I will write it down and get a answer.
Um, and the other question is, um, yeah, A, why? And then B, can we use them elsewhere?
Is it the one on the hill?
So there's two east of the hill.
East of the hill.
Yeah.
Okay.
A lot of more of the pathway style, they're a little shorter.
Okay.
Um. Yes, keep it all lit.
Yeah.
Um, the other thing I was gonna ask there, oh, uh, snow removal, quick conversation, how did the vice principal at St. Ace? They were under the impression that they were to remove the snow on the pathway as well.
No, we own that property.
Yeah, and that's what I told her and she said, while it wasn't super clear to us, we thought we had to clear.
There's more pertains to the, the side.
Right up to forty-third.
Right up on, well, on fifty Ave along the side there.
Yeah, and then Forty-third Street.
That's right. But the trails, we do have a right of way there for our trail network, so.
So anyway, she said she was under the impression that they were to clear those.
Oh, I can give her a call.
Thank you. Any other question for Shelley?
Um, I, I just think a shout out, uh, I, I was walking down to Shangri-La past cobblestones and there were some seniors coming up the, the walkway there and it was clear, ice free. And they were, um, they were really impressed. They wondered who was responsible for it. I said, we are. Um, but, but so if this, if there's a shout out, the thing is we have to remember it, right?
Yes.
Cause it's sort of, sometimes you can lose sight of that, that little walkway, but it's really important for seniors.
Correct. Awesome. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you very much, Shelley. Okay, let's move on to the, uh, ten point two, community rec- and recreation services. Mr. Hans Van Claver.
Thank you. Not sure. Thank you, uh, counselor, I should say.
Thank you. Not sure. Thank you, Counselor, I should say, still Deputy Mayor, but Counselor and the rest of Council. Yeah, I was confused there. Early Childhood Centre, we are of course very thankful to our contributors to that program, especially the nutrition program is a familiar energy. So we see those sponsorships come into our program and that means that we can provide that high quality for our childcare center. For FCSS, want to highlight there the November 29th and 30th. It's an Applied Suicide Intervention Skills Training Workshop. So at that moment, we will support and help out people recognizing and deal with situations that are in their immediate let's say environment happening and seeing their people around them. The Omniplex, you've probably seen interruption of service over there for at least only one in the recent, we are of course in the transition of going to winter and that brings challenges sometimes, but we reschedule and we try to accommodate as good as we can, of course. When we, in this case, had to deal with an heating issue in our only one side of the arenas. There's a lot happening and we are still working with informing the public as good as we can in the sense of calendar. So we've updated one little item in the website, but we will make sure that we do that more and address the request. Can you see what's happening in the pool and different platforms and different calendars? And right now you can see the ice schedule, for instance, if you go to the website, go to what's going on, find the calendar on the town side and then you see the ice schedule coming up and you can basically daily see what's going on. In Oil Corp, Ricochet Oil Corp Aquatic Center. Halloween is behind us in the meantime. We've seen kids going around town, of course, last night and enjoying trick or treating. But we have other things, of course, still going on and one of those items unfortunately is our steam room. We have now lined up our repairs over there under warranty with our contractors and stress them that it's an important feature for our facility. But it shows how, let's say, finicky sometimes technique is, and even when the repairs are happening, that sometimes escalates to a little bit more than anticipated, but it's on their dime. Unfortunately, it is on our time in the sense of interruption of service. The Community Services, the Youth Advisory Committee, November 15th, our next council meeting, they will come in front of you and they will present a couple of the things that they heard already are working on and especially getting information from the community. So they use their platform to get as much information as they can and support all the research and wishes in the community. A lot of stats in there, but you've heard and seen that as well from RDN earlier today and the RCMP as well. In facilities, like I said, it brings challenges when we go from summer to winter transition. But one of the other items that we also see unfortunately is vandalism and graffiti in our community. So we had a lot cleanup to do in the recent days. We basically call on the community, of course, to see and be eyes and ears for us as well and for yourself because it's devastating when things happen and of course we have to clean up items in the community that is not really necessary. So with that, if there's any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Van Claren. Council Bellas?
Okay, just one question was, now that the schedule is available online, has that been communicated somehow to the public?
So thank you for that question, Council Bellas. So we haven't, let's say, put the biggest emphasis on it yet because we want to make sure that we also put the pool, because that has the same capacity on there as well, and then basically push it out. So it's something that we want to spooze up a little bit more before we push it out to the public.
We did, sorry, we did do one post on Facebook on how they could find the Omniplex schedule after last meeting because it was brought up, but we were gonna do more of a training, I guess you could say, once we have both.
Thank you. Any other questions? Council Maggie?
You talk about homeschool group at the CTC and then you mentioned large group. I'm guessing large has it's meant to mean something more than two.
Yes, that's correct. So it's more than two, that means that they fill, let's say, their group quite easily at the moment. And we looking at how they can accommodate that in that location. So large is more than two and they fill up their, let's say, their program with ease.
Okay, because we, last there, there were some students and, you know, they were there. I didn't have any clue what they were doing there, but it doesn't matter, but that must have been part of the homeschool group, yeah?
Yeah, potentially. I don't know what time, of course, they are there or what you encountered over there, but we see an increase with our partners in education of use of the CTC and look forward even to, let's say, make that even more substantial.
And are you tracking the numbers for the curling rink? We've seen a decline a little bit in curling, so we've had discussions in the past about whether or not that is the best use. So you're tracking those numbers?
Yeah, thank you for that question. Yes, we of course know the usage numbers in the sense of the hours that they utilize in the location. It's more of a, let's say, not a contracted but a managed program on that side by curling itself. So when we want to know exactly participation numbers, we need a little bit more conversation with them. But based on, let's say, tracking how much usage in total it has, the hours is important for us, so we track that. And based on the, let's say, joint use for that as well, like if there's any cost sharing and stuff like that, we are interested. But we don't know exactly from day to day the numbers of people on there, but we know the hours.
Yeah, and they pay the fee and.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Regarding the vandalism and graffiti, I was just wondering, you know, which areas that we have more problem and having security cameras probably help us with that.
Yeah, thank you for that question. So in recent, let's say, days, weeks, we've seen it from our outdoor recreation facilities. So Discovery Park has been vandalized significantly. There's not always cameras over there. What we do, especially when we see tag, so that means that, let's say, it's almost autographs or signage from graffiti places. We send it to the RCMP, so they can sometimes track that it's happening in multiple locations or have somebody already, let's say, for vandalizing somewhere else in town, that they can tie that to it. But we, most of those locations, we don't have cameras, let's say, straight on it.
Okay, thank you.
A supplement to that, there is some tagging on the the light posts coming up from that same walkway that I was talking about from Shangri-La. Tags on the sidewalk and tags on the light posts, but that just happened in the last month or so.
Just thinking out loud, maybe we need to, I don't know, designate an area for for these people to just to do graffitis and all that and that may be the way to go. No, thank you very much, Van Claren, for your update. So the next report is from Product Services, Mr. Tom Thompson.
Good afternoon, Council. Just gonna do a quick report on Enforcement Services side of the house. So it's been a long time coming, but finally we are now up to full staff with our Enforcement Services. So we have two CPO officers as well as a bylaw enforcement officer working. So that is really good news for us. It's been a long time coming, so we're really happy that that's now in place. Our newest CPO officer, Razor Frederick, has just received, as Alvera was mentioning, has just received his appointment from the Solicitor General's Office. He's also completed his EVAC training as well as his radar and lidar training. So he is now fully, fully qualified to form all of the duties of a CPO officer. So he is now out and about on patrol as well. Our casual bylaw officer, Alec Johnson, has also been busy reviewing all the bylaws and has been appointed by the town. So he is now out and patrolling as well. Our Enforcement Services Branch has now switched to a change in the schedule. So now we do have officers that will be on patrol and out and about from eight o'clock in the morning to approximately nine o'clock at night. So we've kind of adjusted our schedules. So we've got a wide coverage there for for members of the public. If there's any concerns or any complaints, we can we can deal with that. So that's all really good news. Just to give Council a few stats on Enforcement Services, from January 1st to the end of September, our Enforcement Services Branch has conducted 1,004, 1,046 investigations. We've dealt with 247 inquiries either through phone or through the complaint portal. As well, we've handed out 284 tickets which are either warning or enforcement service tickets. So they are now actively out and about, which is really good and I'm seeing some real positive results in in our community as a result. Another part of our kind of our goals and our strategies for Enforcement Services is to start bringing enforcement type of courses to the town of Drayton Valley. And so we've kind of started going down that road. We have a use of force course that will be going on in the CETC later on this month. All of our officers will be involved in that. It's it's required training that they have to recertify every couple of years. But other CPO officers as well also have to do the same thing. So we're hoping that we can start to have more and more Enforcement Services courses hosted here in Drayton Valley. That's kind of one of the tasks that I've tasked Cody with is to bring more of those types of courses to our community so that they can be held at the CETC or Mackenzie Conference Center or wherever. So that's that's one of the goals that I have set for him as well. He has, he has just been invited to represent the Rural Community Peace Officers on the brand new Provincial Peace Officer Training Advisor Advisory Committee. This has just been formed by the Government of Alberta and so I'm very happy that Cody has accepted an appointment onto that board. And it is important because it will reshape how peace officers are trained. And I'm hoping that with him being involved in that, that we can bring more Enforcement Services courses to our community. So that's kind of our our goal and that's kind of some of the things that we've been working on the last little while. In regards to our unsheltered population out by the dump, the RCMP, Health Services, myself, CPOs, Public Works, we've been out there in the last couple of weeks, visiting with those individuals and we are, we have been explaining the situation, what council would like to see happen out there. They have been quite receptive to it. So on Thursday and Friday, we will be going out to do a general cleanup of the area and meeting with the those individuals as well in terms of SCSS needs and all the rest of that kind of stuff. So that is going to be happening tomorrow and Friday. The goal is to to start cleaning up in that area. It's it's obviously quite a big task, so it's going to take a while. In speaking with a lot of them, they were willing to help with the cleanup because they do recognize that some of the areas are in bad shape out there, so they are willing to help with the understanding that we are, we are dealing with a special population. And so today they say, yes, we'll help and tomorrow, who knows, it's a bit of a crap shoot. But they all seemed very receptive to it. They understand council's position and council's take on it. And so we're just gonna proceed tomorrow and see what happens and go from there. So, and that's my report.
Regarding the cleanup, we're gonna be really monitoring the costs. We talked about it the other day about transparency of these things, so we should know what it is and how it works and how many people are engaged and involved and like a good solid report would be great.
Yep, absolutely. That's that's one of the goals when talking with Shelley. We, that was one of our priorities to make sure that we capture all of the costs for the cleanup.
And you don't need any council members stumbling around there?
If council wants to come out for a visit, they certainly can. However, the, we like to keep the numbers fairly low because they they get pretty antsy out there if they see a lot of people walking through. We have to, we have to keep it in mind, even though for us, we we look at that area as the dump or we look at it as a park. They look at it as their home, so we have to be very careful when we're traipsing through there. And and that's why it's important for us to make contact with those individuals and have conversations with them before we just jump in and start doing stuff, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Maggie, Council Evans.
Tom, did I see a trailer out there when I went by the other day? Is there a travel trailer back in there?
Yes, there's a travel trailer. That travel trailer used to be at, in the Walmart parking lot and our Enforcement Services obviously put the run on them and so now they are camped out there. So that's another issue that we're gonna have to deal with.
I just looked at it and I thought, how did they get that thing in there?
Looking, when Shelley, when we were there last week, we were like, I don't know how they got that thing out there either. Very resourceful, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious, because like I say, I went by and I looked and had to take a second look. That's, that is a travel trailer.
Yes, it is.
How did they get back there? They're creative if nothing else.
Very much so.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Mr. Thompson, for your update. Next report is from Communications Department, Ms. Stone.
Good afternoon, Council. A quick little update for you guys. As Council knows, the Citizen Budget Tool wrapped up a couple of weeks ago and I've been compiling the data from that, so I do have that completed. I've just shared that with Alvera, so that will be forthcoming to Council and will be shared with the public as well shortly. As Alvera mentioned earlier, we have been adding the Facebook feeds to appropriate pages on our website. So like Enforcement Services, the Omniplex, the pool, things like that. So that just wrapped up this week. So that completes that project. And for Growth Services, the Campus Alberta has put together a survey to kind of canvas the area to see if there is interest or how much interest there is in running an LPN program at the CETC in our community. So that survey is now live and we are working to promote that. And as far as I know, it's it's open ended as to an end time, so we're just gonna continue working with them and get those results. And as others have mentioned, there's ongoing snow removal messages going out. We had some safety messages for Halloween last night, the CAO announcement. And Deputy Mayor Gomana was at the presentation of the first poppy and I've been doing some business visitations with the mayor. There's any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Stone. Any questions for Chen? Council Maggie?
I'm a little yakety today, aren't I? Holy matter on it. Thank you for that, Council Evans. Thinking about signage, where, we were gonna do signs here and there and maybe it's not a question for communications. It's more questions for administration that we can ask afterwards. But we were gonna do some things around signage and communication and big signs, little signs, South Side, McDonald's.
We talking the part of the branding project, like the banners or is it the beautification and the item that Shelley had?
Entrance signs that you're talking about.
Yeah, we were doing signage, entrance signs, McDonald's.
Yeah, oh, okay, the actual signs. Yeah, that got deferred. Yeah, no, but it got deferred because of cost and perhaps location question, so we're gonna talk about it again in 2024.
So we put it all of our, we had consultants involved in that and they're all on hold.
Correct.
Waiting for a decision from council?
Yeah, we're gonna re-scope, potentially re-scope, bring it back to council for a decision for the next budget.
Yeah. And lastly, Tom, Cody Rossing getting that, that, you know, getting involved in his association at that level is huge. So, yeah, good on him.
Hey, thank you very much, Ms. Stone, for your update. Let's move on to 11.1, I guess, the council reports. Council Bellas?
Thank you. So on October 19th, I participated in the Homeless this webinar. There's a lot of good information that was brought out and some of this information was shared with the RCMP and I think Tom was there as well. And then on the 21st, we had the pleasure of attending the Drayton Valley Airport and having a meeting with the the committee there and it was very interesting and learnt a lot of things like I did. Like, I didn't know we owned the fuel tanks there. Also, the need that they require for a higher octane of fuel that could increase the participant, because like helicopters and so on, they use different type of fuel. So they're bringing in their own fuel. So that's something that, you know, perhaps we could look at, their antiquated system. Because they have no system, planes can come up there, and they have a logbook. And from that logbook, if they want, they'll enter the amount of fuel that they take and then invoice. According to Jerry, right now, they've been fortunate, and there's been very little fuel missing. But it's something that we should be looking at, and Nancy and Bart were there as well. And they're meeting on November the sixth. And these are some of the asks or concerns that they will be bringing up at that meeting at that time. But, and then I had the pleasure of going on a flight, and I piloted the plane.
Ooh, excellent.
It's still here. Then on the twenty-fourth, we had our PPRRC meeting, which would be the last meeting that I attended as a member of council, and then Councilman Clark will be replacing me. However, I'm remaining on the committee, as they accepted my application, thankfully. On the twenty-fifth, we did have a meeting with the RCMP and fire department. And then on the twenty-thirtieth, we had a special council meeting appointing our CAO, and then the strategic planning retreat. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilor Bellis. Deputy Mayor Clark?
Ditto for a lot of that. Attended the Chamber Awards, presented a couple of awards there. That was really good to see the businesses around town all coming together and celebrating their, their businesses and their folks. Met with Tech Nation regarding their business and DVD, had some questions around kind of thoughts from council as to kind of how the town's going and what we're doing to kind of help promote the town and how things are looking economically, et cetera, et cetera. So good conversation with them, and I guess one little tidbit about them, they do employ forty people directly in Drayton Valley, which I didn't know that this, you know, good, good little chunk of people. And they do operate a couple of their offices, satellite offices from here as well, which employ another thirty people. So that's interesting information. And then lastly, met with Art Free regarding Opportunity Home, provided a bit of an update, and they're likely gonna be coming in the future to chat with us about things, so. That's what I'll have.
Perfect. Thank you. Councilor Evans?
Well, I don't have much to report. I was, took a couple of weeks' personal time there. Just the, attended our strategic planning session there, which hopefully will pay some dividends here moving forward. And that's about it for me, this, this report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Evans. Councilor Sheriffs?
So, ditto to a lot of things, Chamber Awards, the, I attended my first Brazil Foundation meeting. Councilor Maggie introduced me to the board members. Did a couple of online webinars, because similar to Councilor Evans, had a little bit of family situation, so had some time off. Received the invoice from the West Central Airshed Society, and I forwarded to Alvera and the mayor, and we're gonna go out for a review, and then waiting on the board appointments, and that's voted.
Thank you, Councilor Sheriffs. Councilor Maggie?
Better understand, run a good pictures. So I thought it went really well. It's an opportunity to introduce our senior staff. So I'm looking forward to that connection coming together, so spokesmen. Instead of being able to work, and we know he doesn't start till the thirteenth, but I think we're gonna have an opportunity to meet him for the tenth.
Thank you. Mayor Dorts has submitted a report as well. It's on the agenda. For me, on the eighteenth, you know, as everybody said, Chamber Awards. On the twenty-first, Oktoberfest was a fun event, participated about one hundred and ten people and had fun and throwing peanuts and all that. So it was, it was really interesting event organized by the Rotary Club. On the twenty-fourth, first poppy presentation, I was able to attend with Reeve Bart Keong and the Legion. I guess that's the kickoff, kickoff for the poppy season, as well as the Remembrance Day coming up on November eleventh. Thirtyth, a special council meeting and appointment of the CAO. And the thirty-first, yesterday was fun, Halloween, took my kids, went door knocking and all that, and waited on the door to give out candy. So it was a fun event. That's, that's it from me. I think there are some information, sorry, council items, if there's any council initiated items that we need to discuss, this is the time. Having none, I'll go to the twelve point two roundtable discussions. Is there anything that we need to? Oh, sorry. Okay. Thank you very much, Councilor Bellis. All in favor? Okay, twelve point two, roundtable discussions, is there anything that came up in the last couple of weeks that we need to discuss here? Or bring administration's attention? Okay, see none. We'll move on to the information items. I don't think we need to read them, but they are on the agenda. Letter from Minister Tritten, Drayton Valley Minister Library have submitted some documentation, and letter from MLA Boichenko. We just need a motion to accept them as information. Thank you, Councilor Sheriffs. All in favor? Thank you. I guess that concludes our regular council meeting, but we will go into our closed session. Is there a council that would like to make a motion to bring us to closed session? So, Sheriff, thank you very much. All in favor? Thank you.